So as you guys know, kind of, I guess, the county commission approved the changes to the zoning code here recently. When was that? End of July, I guess, twenty-eight, twenty-nine. And so those are on the website, online, on the GIS that's implemented and we're doing. I haven't really got any questions. I mean, there are not too much, I mean, it's, you know, and so we're going to look out for things that might be wrong with the map or unforeseen, something unforeseen, but I mean, it's pretty straightforward, the changes that we're making, it's pretty straightforward. And so as part of that, then when you update your zoning code, so it starts with the comp plan, which I will talk about in a little bit toward the end of this today's session. But it starts with the comp plan, bring your zoning code into the live, the comp plan, so they're telling you to do the same stuff. And subdivision regulations, it's really a technical document, more technically than the zoning code, that tells the planning, or that tells the planning commission, the planning commission owns these regulations, these are all the regulations that'll go to the county commission, they're the property of the planning commission. And so you guys, if you guys want it, basically, within the members of the statute. But you did want to see that your zoning code and your subdivision regulations are saying the same stuff, so, you know, and so since we've amended the zoning code, now we're taking the subdivision regulations forward, so just make some maintenance to those, which we talked about all this once, bad business and things, conversations, emails that we have from you guys, just other stuff that we thought of. We worked it into what I think is pretty public final draft, if y'all have additional requests or questions or suggestions, we'll make changes, for sure. But we, there's a little league on this, it's thirty days, so statute requires, and I've got it right here, we went into the statute requires that has to be published in the newspaper thirty days prior to the document. And so in anticipation of that, we went ahead and got it published in anticipation for the September page, so it was in the paper last Thursday, right here.
So if we made any changes then?
No problem, yes, that's no problem, we, uh, so, if y'all have changes tonight, all we've done, we've published the general summary of the proposed changes. If there's changes from now on in, that's no problem, but we will have a public hearing on the final document, the planning commission, so we'll get it nailed down. I have a copy of the, this draft, I had it already printed out, and I'm just putting it on the desk on my front in our office. And after tonight, I think, we'll make those, that document, which will be on the website, too. We're things out there basically a full month in advance of the public comment and questions and that sort of thing. And so again, this is just amending the subdivision regulations, y'all seen pretty much all of this, but there's a couple things here and there, so I'm gonna run through all these changes again, don't stop me if you have questions or want to talk about stuff. But it gets to begin here on the, I'm sorry, my, I'm getting me today, but departmental name change, which you guys pointed out a few months ago, from the development services to planning engineers, we have reflected there. Table content, we added a section here for retaining walls, we talked about it a good bit. Again, right here, planning and engineering change, development services. On waivers, or that's what we call variances for the planning commission, is there's waivers, there's something I meant to get in there for a long time, I've always kind of forgotten at the last minute. So I wanted to get this, this is new, I just put this in there a couple days ago, but in random waivers, we have these five things here, we don't get any waivers at the planning commission anymore, unless you did. But occasionally they come in, I wanted to put something in there, it's for the board zoning, they do zoning variances, which is a waiver for the zoning regulations. There's a provision, zoning code by those that says financial terms can't be a primary consideration. And so we have that in here for the subdivision regulations, too. And what that's saying is you need to have a lot specific, site-specific reason why you can't comply with the regulations. It can't just be, it's too expensive, it's too expensive to do it that way, and I don't want to do it that way. You have to justify it in terms of topography, or whatever, a specific situation. And so that would have been bad bad. And that and procedures, planning and engineering.
Give me an example.
Well, like, this hasn't come up much since I've been here, but there was a big, or a lot of years ago, like years ago, like talking like one, two thousand seven, two thousand eight, or something, there was a developer, I don't know who it was, they built a road, and the curve was gonna be too sharp or too steep, something like that. And he wanted to get a variance, essentially from, he wanted staff to tell him back then, you don't have to comply with regulations, so. And the staff kind of wouldn't do that, so he went to the planning commission to get a variance, but that time the planning commission wasn't allowed the grandparents, it's by the state law, it only changed a few years ago. So that, but that's an example where if, 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 if one of our requirements for new roads says that it can't be, the slope can't be any greater than this, right? And they need a variance for whatever reason, because, you know, and they justify it in terms of the site itself, that they can be grounds for variance.
There's no way they can do less than fifteen percent or something.
Right, whatever, so that's, that's one example, that's one example. And of course, y'all see the other variances, most of the variances y'all are gonna get the planning commission, that we're gonna be thinking like, you know, you know, related to septic systems, and that's the most common, where it's grandma or grandpa or something, some situations, the surveyor brings to you. And there's a, there's a, there's a familial hardship there, basically. And so, you know, that can be construed as a, you know, financial consideration, but it can also just be, hey, it's a site-specific thing, there are no septic spoils on this lot, or not enough, or something's happened to them, and so they need to have their septic system on the April property. So that's a variance, you know, does that make sense? So, let's see, one name change stuff up there. There. One of those changes. So this is some additional supporting information. One of these, we are, we letter agency, signed by the property owner, that's when somebody turns in a preliminary plat. We would already require that anyway, that's something we would require, but it's not good for staff to require anything that isn't explicitly in the regulations. So this just clarifies, you gotta turn it to letter agency. And what that is, is that's off the horizon for the surveyor, the engineer to work on the property owner. That could give me a more, like, sometimes when you have family disputes and those kinds of things, where they start fighting about, you know, buddies, you know, that'd happen. And then another one is, they need a high density solenoid. So basically, this is something that is, this will be a change, this is, this is something that'll be a change for surveyors and programmers, surveyors particularly. Most of them, you know, Richard Berry, a lot of his others, there are any difference anyway, they do it, they're not gonna get it to the point where they're submitting to us without making sure that it'll perk, you know, and that stuff. But there's a lot of other surveyors and past work, I don't know if you think that, but we can think of a few, that they don't, they just, they just turn it in. And so that wastes everybody's time, because we review it, they spend money, we're not giving you back the money after it turns out it doesn't perk, or something like that, you know? So this requires them to do all their due diligence, we already require a water vulnerability letter, require the letter of agency, require all these other things on the front end. You can't, you can't build on a lot that won't perk, you can't buy a lot that won't perk, so let's go ahead on the front end, get the solenoid done, and turn that in with it. And so that would be a change, there would be people that don't like that first, but they're interested, other counties can do it this way.
You know, we probably wouldn't like having people that's not planning properly, you know, they learn planning properly, that's all, all of the place.
Yep, and that's what I tell everybody, is that what we do, a lot of people think that it's, you know, trying to some mechanic planning office, rather than creating plans, we get these secret plans, but really, we're just making everybody else plan, that's really what we do. We just require everybody else to plan on the front end, before they help you guys. Let me make sure there's that. Construction plan, that's kind of there. Final plat. I added something here, this is new, we require one to one under scale, this is all very boring stuff, for the like person, I understand that, but the rest is pretty good. T-DAC requires one to one under scale, so one inch is a hundred feet on the plat. For septic systems, they won't bring anything different than that, but for sewer lots, that's too small, because you have to, the lots are smaller, you have too many easements, and they get really confused because they're too small to breathe. So we're clarifying here, what surveyor actually pointed out to me, they said, oh, to do a different scale, if your regulations require one to one under here, and I said, well, they're flexible. But they pointed it out, and he was right, it, it, there's no flexibility, so this gives us the flexibility to allow a bigger scale on sewer lots. This changes the name here, it talks about Sunder County Fire Mentalist, I've never liked that phrase, that's referring to the T-DAC employee that approved septic permits, I think that policy is good, but they don't anymore. And so I just got rid of that, we're saying administration of the testing department of fire conservation to approve the secondary or secondary disposal, rather than county fire mentalists, because some of those are vendors. That they used, so they used to have an office up in the village, it was still T-DAC employee, they, we gave them free office space, and it was basically like, it helped the public align, because they could just come and talk to some T-DAC, and schedule a report, and have their question answered. They worked so well in the state of Tennessee, decided they all had to go remote, and they made them all even building, all of them health state, and so they all work remotely now, and so they don't have to offer it anymore. And so, anyway, so, and he still does a really good job, and it was right in person, but they've got it now, it's right now, so, still doesn't work as well as it used to, but anyway. No patient health restrictions, I think this is just some old obsolete language from way back there about the health department, no patients, the health department hasn't been doing it, it has for a long time, so I just clarified that to say that, say that restrictions have to be on the plat, T-DAC requires them, if y'all look on the class of the septic systems, you'll see a whole bunch of stuff, it's like, lot two was restricted to a four bedroom, lot three restricted to a two bedroom, or whatever, five bedroom. This number four is doing that same stuff that the preliminary plat does, with the full map and the letter of agency and that kind of stuff. But what it's saying is, minor subdivision, specifically for minor subdivision plats, because that one doesn't require preliminary plat approval, it's also preliminary where we get all this information, a water letter, all that stuff, on a major subdivision. But minor subdivisions, this just clarifies that they need to turn this thing in, basically. That's the D-E-T letter of agency, water regularly letter, sewer regularly letter, if it's on septic. And if it's on, or I'm sorry, if it's on sewer, they need a sewer letter, and again, if it's on septic system, they get a, a solenoid, standing approved. Design standards, a little bit will mean here, improvement of substandard roads, so we've talked about this a good bit, of course, I didn't mention, we can work on this, this subdivision regulation stuff for, gosh, at least a year now, or more, we've been getting around a lot of stuff, we were working on that and the zoning code at basically the same time, but this is one thing we've been working on for a while. And so this is related to street design alignment, improvement of substandard roads, and what it says is an improvement of major subdivision platform development, you guys are authorized to require that it be approved to the zoning standards and these regulations. And it takes us up this end of zoning code changes that recently, we've done about eighteen feet pavement with California, and so, and what it says is county roads less than eighteen feet in width shall be subject to improvements along the project's front edge, as part of a major subdivision plat application. And so y'all remember, it talks about major subdivisions, and the zoning code actually improved the road if it's less than eighteen feet in width. And so just, this is about, it's just for the subdivision regulations, say the same thing with the zoning code. And then, I, I, I want to see what y'all thought of this is new, this is new, here, I've never read that up there, but I borrowed this from Wilson County, I was looking at their subdivision regulations a while back, and this is something that I wanted to, but they have this language pretty close to verbatim in there. But it says, regardless of the findings of any traffic study, new subdivision developments or fifty or more lots shall be required at minimum to add a left turn lane for the roadway or roadways that provide an access. And so with that, Wilson County has that in place at this time, you know, fifty or more lots of it, you're gonna put a turn lane on the road that's providing access, and access, it's just, you're just gonna have to do it. And so, you know, we're developing, here's, here's, I'm sending one up, what they'll do, they'll, they'll, they'll do forty-eight lots, and they'll try to challenge, you know, that kind of stuff. But I think, I think what the rest of this says is basically, they're gonna have to do a traffic impact study, that kind of thing, and you'll still have the grounds to require that.
So if you're talking about if you're going down the road, and there's probably fifty or more on the right side, there is a right side turnout and a center lane that?
Well, the way it's in there right now is, is it just says, that they're at minimum to add a left turn lane into and out of it.
Okay.
Yeah. It is.
So it's not necessarily a right side turnout?
But it's, it's at minimum, a left turn lane, and so they might be like, require more if the traffic impact study says that they need to.
Yeah, if it's a hundred and fifty, you need a left turn.
Right, or it might, like, the random mill, that's a situation where they did what was the last one, thirty something lots, but the traffic study said, hey, left turn lane is warranted and right turn lane is warranted, so it's not, it's not, we called, we called that one regardless of what this says. But this is just something to, to get, to get those folks out of the way, you know, although the new development, when it comes in, to find a way to get them out of the way, to get the traffic improvements around the subdivision done, that's just part of it.
You know, I've been thinking a lot about the eighteen foot wide road. You know, nine foot wide lanes is not luxurious, and I was wondering, where's that eighteen came from?
Eighteen, it really goes back to a couple things, one of them is in a T-DOT standard, there's a T-DOT standard somewhere about what, about acceptable roadway width. And there, what, there's a T-DOT manual, I can't remember exactly which one it is, that spells out eighteen feet is an acceptable roadway width on a local road. It's not a state road necessarily, state highway's gotta be a bit wider than that. So it's there, and then a lot of it is practice, and so the highway department for many years has, they really considered anything that's eighteen feet or better to be a good road, in their opinion. It's not substandard to them, as far as their, for their purposes. And that eighteen feet, because of the T-DOT manual and what the highway department says there, that's something that's kind of been settled off, something that's good enough. And so you're good enough county roads that are out there, or that, you know, and when you drive on the way down, you can tell, it's, 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 it don't feel in danger, it feels tight, which slows down speed. It's not a bad thing to have it there or the standard road, because you're gonna drive slower on that road than you would if it was fifty feet wide, right? But at the same time, it's not fourteen feet wide, but when you meet somebody, you're like, how am I gonna survive in this, basically?
Because don't, don't, the typical highway lanes are twelve feet?
A state highway, at least, at least, yeah, if you go, part of the there was state roads in Sunder County, it's highway two fifty-nine, I don't know if I'm correct, and I believe it's, I believe it's right at twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. It feels, it, because when you're driving fifty-five miles an hour, twenty-two feet wide doesn't feel that wide, it's all about your perception, it's, you know? And so it doesn't feel, it doesn't feel safe to go a hundred miles an hour now, that's in twenty-two foot wide road. But now in thirty-one acres, it's, it's paved with a sixty-five percent of the quiet, you feel totally comfortable driving.
Yeah.
You know, seventy-five miles an hour, like people do through there, you know?
Yeah, it's just, I've been thinking a lot on random, a room with those forty thousand square foot lots. They actually could, when they have a first foot parking or something, they could park in their driveway, but a lot of times they don't, they certainly don't want their lawn care people. You know, so they're on eighteen foot wide road, there is no shoulder, because it's, it's a ditch, and it, it's, it's a problem. And, you know, maybe with the higher density projects, we might want to consider in the future, what, why is it?
So if you look on, in that same road, or Mr. Brooks did that subdivision, he built, and that's, that's over in there, the back end of that, is in the suburban place, not in our home.
Right.
That road is twenty-five feet.
Twenty-two, yeah.
It's twenty-five feet wide with, with, you know, it's much, much wider cross section, heard about that.
It, it still doesn't allow for parking on both sides.
No, no, not easily, you're gonna have to walk your way around it.
Yeah, the track back road in San Diego, California, forty-two foot wide residential roads, so you have two lanes and street parking on both sides. But that, that gets really expensive for the county.
Yeah, that's a lot of consideration.
So it would be stream, flooding, or?
Eighteen foot probably is developed with really good technical reasons, that they pay, which the widest one they have is on nine feet, so they have eighteen feet.
That works.
Why, I'm speculating, I'm really surprised that that was the reason.
Josh, going back to the word, here they can look out, which I really like that, but what I see, that's a real, a real hole in there, is a couple phases. And as we have developed, we have this, we had this, this type of, kind of, that's, they lied to us, they just didn't tell us everything. And so there's phasing, so you have phase one, phase two, phase three, and interestingly, that's the same thing, you know? But, but I really think that they give away, if you don't have something in here that says that the potential for phasing will make that requirement all the time, so I'm saying that. Because they could come in and phase here, phase one would be twenty-five miles, phase two fifteen, phase three would be forty-seven, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
And then like, oh my, what would we have to do this five years ago, what would we have to do this now?
Well, and one of the other two is, they were, you know, fifty lots, and they're rid of forty-five, and they have some, that's something that you're more used to, and they're into the end, and walkway, and those kinds of things, you know?
I'm just saying, that, that's important, because, I mean, I, I know I could work on it, but I have to keep it down to.
Yeah, that's, that's very important, and, and, you know, that's, too, you know, one of the things that we always try to do, and I'm gonna tell you, this, I said, Fisher Crane, it's been a while back, and it was about the planning requirements, it's actually been, it's been a good while ago, but there was a surveyor, not one of our local surveyors, just somebody that does stuff here occasionally, that, that held Sunder County out, and our final plats, our final, the process we have to go through, get every final plat, and it's all the hardest in the state of Tennessee, and so I was, I was very pleased about that. But not for bad, not for bad purposes, but because we're very thorough, and then we require, like what you're talking about, when you go through all that development, and, and we know you got it internally. I'm probably gonna try to recommend that that turn lane get done with the first phase, if that's impossible, go ahead and get it done, maybe second phase, that kind of thing, but you don't wanna, you don't wanna let, like, you don't wanna do like four, five, six, seven at the end, and, and, and get all your approvals at the end. Because things can happen, like what you're talking about, new owner comes in, new planning commission comes in, new county commission, and things, things get lost and shuffled, because these projects take years, and they take, it's a long time to figure out.
And that's the reason why the plat required.
That's right, that's right, that's, that's what we do, yeah, we require this.
It's all right.
Yep. Yep. We.
It's on the road, it's gotta be driven from the bottom to the left, and just walking around, I don't use my ability, but it's kind of, it's kind of a, a learning development, really, from different sides of the fence, utilities, everything here. And I see that it's not their intention, there's not an intention, it's just that, what the hell, well, it is a work something.
So wouldn't it be better to murder it before completion of fifty, fifty F?
Yeah, we, we, yeah, we.
That way, if you're gonna have phases, right, so completion of the fifty.
If, if, if there's a legal, if there's a legal way, yeah, you will get locked in, and you have to.
So there's twenty-five in the phase two, they need a twenty-five, or there's a fifty, or?
If, if the completion, like, we recommended that there's a perception, or there's a, more of a, there's a pretty good evidence, this is more than explained, and, and, you know, beyond musical, that is more than explained, that they could go ahead and get required for me. Because obviously, we're trying, you know, we are architect, and builder, developer, because they gotta roll to their cost.
Right.
They're not gonna get me hit by surprise, a lot of them surprises, I'm just telling you that.
Yeah.
And the more candid we are, starting with developers and builders, like.
Predictability.
Second thought I had, Josh, was, you made a point, if it's a larger subdivision, you may need to require a right turn lane, or some other, is there any kind of work that in there, I don't know if that existing verdict makes sense?
Well, so it's kind of the, the rest of it, so if, with the improvement of substandard roads, this is, this is started as well, this is just a little bit more specificity down here, but what is, this is kind of broad here, and what it says is the planning commission never required the impact of substandard roads being approved, the known standards, such improvement shall be commensurate with the impact of proposed development, and whenever possible, shall be supported by traffic studies conducted at the development, which means. And so we're, in any, any project that we feel like needs a traffic study because of a safety issue, or that generates more than one hundred feet power curbs today, which is usually gonna be fifty lots or more, that's the traffic study, that's what the existing conditions and that kind of stuff. And so if, if the traffic study goes back up the ground and building, says, hey, this, this turn lane is warranted, this right turn lane is warranted, you can go ahead and require those. But you, you know, you don't wanna, you don't wanna necessarily, it's like I'm doing with forty lots on a road, it doesn't have a lot of traffic, it doesn't necessarily, you know, if it's not warranted, you don't wanna have, you don't wanna, one, you don't wanna waste the development money, not that that's a big language, it's a primary consideration, but two, you don't want necessarily improvements that are going in there that don't need to be there because it's kind of asking.
So we're saying that the traffic study could supersede what we're calling out, because B is very specific.
With B, with B, yeah, that's, that's exactly right, but the traffic study might require a whole lot more than that. Might require a whole lot less, so we can say, regardless, fifty lots more, you're gonna get the right turn.
Okay.
Yeah. Traffic, traffic studies, they're good, but, but, you know, they're, they're, the guy that pays for this development, you know, it's, 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 it's.
With this, we talked about this, I think, a lot, if the development has more than one entry.
We're gonna get, we're gonna get, right, right, that's, we're gonna get to that in a minute, but that's, that's, that is a great, great thing. Road improvements in areas of, of flooding, we talked about this last time, but what this is basically saying, and this is something county engineer, and I've talked about it a good bit, intersectional has the, these regulations on the books, I think I've kind of borrowed a lot of the work pretty close. But it, what this is meant to do is to discourage one construction of new county roads that are in the floodplain. So in other words, if you're building a new county road, the road itself has to be up out of the floodplain, and you have to have a no ride certificate to do it in a way that shows that you're not flooding somebody out by building it, right? So that's just, that's basic floodplain penetration, so, but there's nothing in our regulations that exactly says that. And so new roads that are in the floodplain have to be two feet above a hundred year floodplain elevation, and then, so that's, that's one. Two, connections to existing roads in the floodplain. And so there's a lot of roads, if you guys drive around the county, there's a lot of roads in the county where there's a creek that follows the road, and they follow each other. And so what, and a lot of those road segments are in the floodplain, so like, I was out on the road the other day, it's in the floodway, floodway, through there. And so what this, what this really does is to say that subdivision should not be allowed to construct in new, so if I've got a existing county road, it's in the floodplain, floodway, whatever, I'm not allowed to connect a new county road into that in the floodplain, right? Without either elevating the road, maybe the existing road and that, or, actually, I guess it's, or and, provide an alternate road access that's not the floodplain. So what that means is, if, if, if their, if their existing road access is here, well, maybe, I think the regulations are in a way that it would allow that road connection to be made, but they're gonna, they're gonna have to, they're gonna have to raise it up more, find a new way in it. Right. So Williams County has something similar to that, I know they got a project that they've been with for a while, that has had this issue of finding a new access, because they don't allow road connection to the floodplain.
So like, with Wright's lane, there could be a mile of that road that's in the floodway, do they have to bring the entire road out?
Right, and so there's, 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 you can't, you can't elevate in the floodway, can't do.
Well, it's practical cost.
Can't, that's right, can't do it, so you can't, you can't elevate in the floodway without going through a really, really lengthy process of going through things like a new floodway, and just doing all these things. And so there's something, it's, it's. Um, and so there's something, it's, it's in here. All the infrastructure shall be sufficient to discharge flood flows, no ride certification, no shall be provided. Where Phil is approved by the county engineer to bring the finished elevation, meaning public weight and required elevation, uh, you cannot approach from the floodway. And the field shall be contained. So you can't, you can't go in and build no rise lane that's in the floodway, uh, being, that's a federal requirement of our participation in the flood insurance program. So you can't go in the floodway.
Sure.
It's essentially, um, there's a lot of our folks that argue that it's essentially like a big contamination, you know, it's, it's, it's green space, it's permanent green space, you can't develop it, you can't do anything with it. And you can put utilities in it, but that's because there's no rights. Uh, but other than that, that's it.
That's really interesting. From all of that land between Round Creek and Wright's Lane, cannot access from Wright's Lane?
If it's, if it's in the floodway, right, they can't, they can't have it.
Yeah, well, it all is.
They can't, can't have it in there, in the, in the, as their sole access.
Because it doesn't, it's like, until the face book probably, which is the case in here. Well, you say sole access, it really goes further, doesn't it?
Right.
You don't, you have fifteen ways in there, you still can walk around their road and sit in the floodway.
That's right.
That's why.
And we, 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 Marshall has done a really, really great job in the last couple of years of, of profiling that process, because that was a big, one controversy with FEMA. And FEMA, when I, when I first came here, and I followed this first, it was a floodplain administration, so these people put corners in areas that are in the floodway. They don't like it, FEMA didn't like FEMA, basically, they didn't do it. It's like, unless they're holding way, you can get from their house to, or where they want to build a house to the road, and so we worked it out, there, there's a process, and they have to do this, a flood study is very expensive, but they have to do, do all that, so. All this stuff, yeah, the things along the, all the roads we have in Southern County that are all in the floodways, they've been bought from, all that floodplain, and so we've done a lot, many, many, many lots of them.
Gosh, I don't see, and I, I read some verbiage in here about discharge of flood flows, but I don't see anything in here, correct me if I'm wrong, that if you raise a road, that it shouldn't result in ponding of water.
That's. Yeah, I think, I can see what you're saying, yeah.
We've got to raise the road, and now we have a new pond that we didn't have.
That's right. Well, my secretary is an engineer, let me ask you this question. Um, the no ride certification, is that, is that, would that be covered under the no ride certification? Or do you have ponding?
I, I honestly don't know, that's a question.
If, if, fine, but if it's not, I'll, we'll, we'll add something, that, that there should be no ponding, that kind of, that's it. Uh, so, y'all remember this, incredible lot of lands, uh, this is something Marshall wanted to get in here, uh, fifty degree or something, something to, to, to one or greater. Uh, basically, that's saying, you're, you're, you're going to build a lot, basically.
Yeah.
I'm like, how old are you saying? Used to be one and a half to one, they got rid of that.
Uh, this is just saying, just clarifying floodplain construction requirements of the zoning code and these regulations. pertaining walls, we talked about this several times, this, this hasn't changed, this is the work that it's in, you know, in the zoning code. All right, now, here's secondary points for emergency access. So access to lots, and this, uh, let's see, so subdivisions, do we consider that a little bit more? About that, we, we, it's good. Uh, so subdivisions containing more than thirty lots shall provide more than one entrance onto a public road in order to facilitate emergency access. Uh, in no circumstance shall a road stop terminating an undeveloped piece of property not part of the code of development satisfy this requirement. And so what that's saying is, if you do more than thirty lots, you gotta find a second way in and out for the development. Uh, and, and we're not going to accept the road stop. Uh, that has another master something on that, at the end of the night, but that was accepted by a previous plant, the planning commission invested project, I don't know if this would be going forward, that wouldn't be accepted in all terms. Uh, that's something that felt, put out quite a bit, and I said, we're going to stop a good piece of property, can that, can that count as our own connection? Because it's a future connection, and it would. Uh, because it might be thirty years until that, the property develops, or may never develop. Uh, larger developments shall be phased, so the usable secondary entrances provided prior to the creation of more than thirty lots. And so what that's saying is, it has a hundred lots approved, um, they can phase one, and twenty lots, no problem, there's one line that's still in there. Um, uh, but when they cross that thirty threshold, that's when they have to go ahead and build the, the second, second entrance. And there's, there's a development pressure station, um, that's, that's, uh, got the first phase built years ago, and they're working on phases two and three right now. Uh, we require second entries for them, we, we, we kind of put some of this stuff into practice without, without it being necessarily a letter of the law. So, but, but, but it's something that we, 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 we need to see that secondary.
Are there any developments applying anywhere?
I, I think more than thirty lots, if, if, if you're one of the phases, but basically what it's saying is just to cover, to cover your bases, there's space coming in, no matter what size development, if they've got forty lots, they've got three hundred lots. Um, when they can do thirty-one lots, and then when they, when they have thirty-one lots of that development approved, they've got, they've got to buy the secondary entrance at that time. And so what I, I guess, what it's really saying is, uh, you know, if you did, if you come in and do twenty-five lots, I guess you're good to go, or whatever, but if you do thirty-five, or three hundred, or whatever, um, before you're going to get, before you're going to get by approved to do the thirty-first lot, you gotta, you gotta show us that.
And that is literally based on state fire records?
Well, it's, no, it's, uh, it's in the fire code, that's the fire code, and so what, what fire code says is, uh, there's a, it's in an appendix, and it's a, about, we, we don't like, Southern County's never adopted the fire code at all. Uh, but, but it's in the, uh, it's, it's in the, the fire code that says thirty lots on a dead road is all you can, basically. But there is a carve-out in there that says, if you sprinkle those houses within that, within the development, then you can do more. And if, if, if you use a residential sprinkler, sprinkler system within, within the houses, then you can do more, and I forget what it says on there, there's like, there's, there's a flexibility in it.
But we don't have.
No, we don't, we don't, we don't have anything on the list, like, for, in this, you know, we got, we talked about it a, a month or two ago, and there's nothing in our regulation, but.
Is it in the place that, start looking at some of the, other county, your urban junk scripters?
Well, uh, you know, if, if, if that's, you know, what Mike Christian wants to do, and that necessarily means, uh, we have dollars, you know, means all of the, uh, inspections and all that stuff. Right, right, yeah.
It's important to get that signal really, you know.
I heard that, I thought something would be taken, because it's a, oh, there's buildings, it's a, our actions will look at it, they'll look at it.
It's a big building.
I guess, you can take a look there. I think anything in urban will suffer enough, so, I, I can take the location, and something else.
One thing I like to do is, is, I do this, I'll email my counterparts to different county governments around the region, and see what they do, and see what everybody else is doing with fire, fire strike orders, or residential, and that kind of thing. And we'll go back to that. Um, and then see here, developments along existing dead end roads shall be considered under these provisions, with that being a part of the, they can grow improvements. Mike Christian, shall be necessary, it's pretty broad, like we've got there, what we're saying is, if you, if you come in along an existing dead end road, you know, come in on thirty-one or something like that, and you're, you're doing a development, there's, it's basically fair, fair, lots, lots of ingress, interest. Uh, but if you come in on a dead end road somewhere, I mean, um, basically, I think what I'm trying to say here, maybe not as I breathe it, I'm not saying it's clear, like I should have been, you know, the thirty lot provision is going to trigger you to need to, on, for that dead end, to find some other way in and out on that too. Because you've got one dead end road, that's essentially from, within the development, uh, maybe it's not a dead end road, but you still have a critical situation with the, you know, road that it gets its access.
Yeah, but it's in the middle of the city. It's a two and a half mile off the dead end road.
Um, that's mostly it, I think. Uh, it's, yeah, almost, it's a hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty, something like that. With the, a lot of it's the roadway, the roadway standard. What the, and the most, what, what I feel, what I'm seeing is, you know, the, the best thing is, probably the first fifty pages of the, your legal pages, okay, of the, of the subdivision, lot, 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 it depends, you know. Um, all right, this, this is something we talked about last time, burning a brush and breathing. Um, I'm trying to kind of, I pare it back a little bit, what, what it says here, we're just hearing that, and we have the ability, probably during the pre-construction meeting, um, if you're, if you're burning as part of the development, without a thousand feet of existing subdivision, we have the, the authority to require that. Um, so we're not, you know, we're not going to, or issue burn permits or anything like that, I'd be, we'll probably come up with a new permitting process for murder. Uh, but we allow it once by burning a brush of the buildings that are next to the existing buildings. And so this is, this is something that gives us the ability to require that, it's part of the development process, very, very narrow, so it's not, so like burning their trash out of the county or something, we're not going to, we don't care about that, this is just a part of the development. Uh, certificate of completion, this is just, this is saying that, because it's discussed in that paragraph. Access. And then, on the, there was another thing that we discussed, I actually, I kept looking at it, and she would know it, and, and, and Mr. Belcher was kind of, to look at it for me, and we kind of went running around on it a little, and um, I, I, I thought, as built, I just decided to leave that language out there, because it has required signatures and a statement and all that stuff, like we've already said before. And so there's a little correction right there about bonds, and we, we don't, we don't take bonds anymore, that happened a long time.
Oh, really?
Yes, we take letter of credit, letter of credit, um, the bonds are harder to collect, and, you know, factor in the, the recession, it's, you know, a lot of those things, you know, the, the way they're set up, it's, you know, the developer puts down a smaller amount of money for a, for a bond, basically, letter of credit, they put the money up in the bank for whatever it is, is really what we're doing, so. Uh, the money's there, if, if they default, therefore call it a letter of credit, it's much easier, yes, so taking surety bonds, basically, taking the past, or most of your, most of your life takes a letter of credit now.
That's a good idea, I agree.
Wait, that's, that's our form, that was more important. And that's it, that's it, the rest of it's just fantasy, we're not necessarily going to, um, well, there's something right there, so, uh, planning engineering, just little name change stuff in there, because there's no more substantial changes the rest of the time.
The last one, Josh, we talked about, with the second entrance, if the roads, burrows, people want, like.
Right. I think some of that, I, I have to say that some, some of that has to be on y'all's discretion, I think, I think that's something where y'all would have to look at it and say, that's, that's something, you know, if, if you feel like it's an unsafe situation. Um, I think, you know, we, we definitely look in there, just to try to explain all that, one thing I've, I've always tried not to do, even though this is still a long back, it's a hundred forty-three pages, no, but I, I, you can't anticipate everything, sometimes you have a general language, and sometimes general language, the law function, you know, is like, so, too broad, because it kind of gives you arbitrary authorities, but, but also something like that, I think, if, if they're, if they're not meeting spirit, if it can't, if the regulations by doing something, you know, because they've got two entrances, say, we have two entrances, yeah, but after a hundred feet, they come back into the road, and that's, that's not, that doesn't meet the, yeah, and I think you can call upon that, and that's nice. Or require them to revise, you know, go back to the drawing board. Um, so that's that. Um, other thing, we've got about fifteen, fourteen minutes, but I did want to talk with you guys very briefly. Um, now that we've got some other changes out of the way and that kind of stuff, uh, a while back, a long time ago, actually, we had a question set aside, some budget for our company, I think. We talked about it all the time, there's a big reason, how we want to manage, it seems like one could get a lot of stuff on, y'all can be talking about every time. You know, how we want to manage, it's something, as it exists now, it's not showing up, that's a big problem, but that's just one part of it. And so, uh, we, we have funding to, uh, to, uh, still, still set up a fund with the finance office to do that, on the company. And so what we want to do is probably get started on that, we actually have started on it already, uh, to some extent. And so, uh, what, what we've done, we, we, a number of months, because I think stuff in the budget, it sucked all our attention out of my brain pretty much, and so I wasn't able to work on it much, other than that, but, but if you look up here, we've got kind of some design things that we've worked on, and so, uh, now, this is all just place over, but, you know, we'll, we'll work with you guys, in addition to the mink of the plan, which is very, you know, what, what it says we should be doing. You also have to decide on things like, how, how's it going to work, what's the mission statement of the plan, I think. Uh, and so, uh, this is kind of the overall design that we've, we've been working on a little bit, this is old, this is taken from an old map that we've got in the office from eighteen seventies.
It's so cool.
Yeah, and so, and, but, so, you know, kind of the thing that we're looking at here is, you know, the history of the county and, and, and the, you know, the, because this is, this is a plan for the county, this is a plan for the city, this is a plan for the county, and so, um, and we've got some placeholder language up here, y'all always say these kinds of things, but uh, the kind of slogan of the plan we, we have on here for now is prosper, preserve, protect. And so that was, that, that kind of, you know, is the thing that we talked about, the planning commission's not in the way for folks to do things that, uh, fostering and developing, those kinds of things, while you preserve the, the, you know, the character of the county, and protect what you got. And so that can go, or stay, or be something else, we just have it on there for now. Um, other thing we've got here is, uh, we're, the, the big component of this is going to be, uh, public outreach. Um, and so, uh, getting, getting surveys and that kind of stuff out to the community to see what people think about things, and so one thing we put together, this is a draft, this is a placeholder, uh, but this is a, uh, we, we've got a mock-up, and I've actually got one. Um, we'll be getting those properly printed up, but I, we have, like I said, we have the funds, the local county commission has, has given us to, to work on this, so we do things like reading and stuff like that, but, um, that's a, we can see there is, uh, a public survey, uh, with a QR code, um, that you can scan, you can find, it'll take you to, in a, in a link as well, um, that, that'll take you to a survey. Uh, we have questions put together, there are places for questions right now, but they're pretty close, I think, to what, what we were asked. And so this is the, this is the heavy stuff in, in, in the planning world, in the, in the city county planning world, so maybe it'll be a process, but we'll work with you.
I think there, uh, there's, it's time, it's, it's the best time to get that up to the stage where it's, you know, and I, I see, I see that as a hot spot, that kind of service to go out, I mean, you think that, from our, it's a, it's a, really all the way to the gas line, all over the world, all over the, like, eastward. It does, uh, very importantly, is outstanding, making it very.
And it would go in county wise, you know, and what says a lot to that document there, I think, is, you know, if you're in the city, or out, out of county, or whatever, as long as you live, it's under county, we won't grant it, they're all county residents. Um, and so, like I said, we got survey questions, the next one, what we're going to do, my, my plan to kind of continue working on this is, uh, I'll bring out the survey questions. Um, this is, we, we've figured out how to do all this stuff already in-house, with the QR codes and the surveys and all that stuff, if it, it works, it's live. And so, uh, but we can, we can fix it, um, you know, some new questions and stuff like that. Uh, but we'd like to, you know, get on the website, get it out to the public in different ways, uh, probably have some speaking engagements and stuff like that, and if there's places y'all want to go, we can talk to folks about what we're doing, and what we want to, what we want to, you know, what we're looking to hear, y'all want, want me to do that stuff.
We'll send you on tour.
Do I?
We're going to send you on tour.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, yeah.
Martin Reed.
That's right, I'll, I'll sing about that. That's true, I'll, I'll sing about that, I'm just playing. But, uh, and then, so we'll work on that kind of stuff, and then there's, uh, as I mentioned, there's, uh, the plan objective, or not certain plan objective, it's the, the vision statement, that's something that's like I wrote down, so, there's a vision statement, that's very important part of the plan, where you're saying, here's what we want to accomplish for this one. And so, we'll, we'll work on that next month, and I, I've got, I've got something put together that, that, that I hope is in all part, but I'll, you know, get something, thanks for your love.
You know, um, I've been thinking about this a lot, since you've been talking about it for six months. We came here, and I think to identify some of the problems with the county, for people who are going to fill out a certificate, one that comes to mind, you guys are all probably really tired of hearing about it, but, when I discovered last summer that fifty thousand residents in some county leave the county, go to work, that, that's a problem, because by definition, now, we're a better community to either Davidson County is probably the most popular, where people are going to work to, so they're having to leave the county, go to work, and probably to some degree, Kentucky. And what that tells me as a community minded person, we don't have enough jobs in this county for people to work. And so, you and I, Josh, have talked about, you know, how we can carve out industrial areas that would not impact the community, that would be close enough to arterial highway, to get to sixty-five degrees rapidly, but not affect the residents, but, but the law is sure of it, we've got two houses, not enough commercial and industrial buildings here. That, I think that would be helpful for residents to know, we, you know, really what we're seeing on the planning commission is people don't want anything built, you know, somebody comes with a commercial project, we don't want that, if they come with housing developments, we don't want that, well, I think we have to be the voice of reason here, to a degree, to say, look, here's, here's what the issues are, we've got flood control issues, we've got traffic issues, we've got a lot more people who are not working within the county, who pay a lot of sensitive for quality of life, we'd rather drive ten minutes to work rather than an hour. And so, you know, I, this is just food for thought, you know, because next month he's gonna bring the questions, and we want this survey to be as certain, I mean, we, what we want is what the people want, first and foremost, you know, those of us who are commissioners, that's, that's why we ran, and that's who we're trying to protect, is, is the people in, meaning District Six, you and your district, and Christie and hers, but all of us are civic minded, we wouldn't be doing this job for free if, if, if we weren't trying to do the best for our communities. So, you know, I, I'm just encouraging you to maintain along those lines, and on Josh, and everybody he's going to just bring into creating this twenty forty-five comprehensive plan, so that we can do the most of good for, for the county as we can. And so, but, but I think knowledge is power, and if people know what the current situation is in the county, that will help us, give us, you know, give them better direction to fill out their, you know, their surveys, and get better information back to you, so they want to see.
And so, as I kind of mentioned, it's, you know, and missions talked about it being a, a staff kind of thing, and that's, and that's fine, um, there's no certain thing, we'll probably need some technical assistance, and so, there are plenty of funds available, one thing is support the county commission, one thing we may go to is, uh, trying to get a contract to get a little finding, it's all the same, um, like a task board kind of thing, so if we need somebody to help us with data collection, or land use inventory, you know, those kinds of things, that they, where they, they essentially look at every parcel, and they tell you what, you know, county wide, what's every single parcel they utilize for, the bay ends, that's just the thing, there's only those different things. And so, we're probably gonna have a, like a task board kind of thing, where we can have a contract, somebody to help us with that kind of stuff, as the, as the, kind of sort of leave the plan, just to help us up here and there, and on, on certain technical things, and we can be assisted with, so, but, but other than that, I mean, it's, uh, it seems like something that's, uh, obviously, well, obviously it's needed, obviously the company, as I, as I think, you know, and, um, go back to, when we very first started talking here, we had this photo session, you know, the, uh, your comprehensive plan is the vision for the county, and so we could be great to be able to, to get that together, and then get the zone code to match it, which is what makes things really hard right there sometimes, is, um, you have folks coming to rezone property every time they want to do anything, ever rezone property, because most of the county is a rural residential, it's not open for different kinds of, 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 of projects, like what you're talking about. And so, if you identify those areas where, hey, we want to see this kind of stuff here, and get a plan adopted, then give it the zone code to allow those things, then they can do it, and they can just find a site, and they have a right to kind of do those things, and so, it makes things a lot easier, obviously a lot more predictable for people looking to buy sale property and those kinds of things.
And, and if somebody wants to move, it's, it's, you know, set up with this, and it's, here, here's an investor, it's all set, do it.
That's all we got?
Okay, last one. We'll, it's probably a couple of minutes.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to bring this meeting to order, it is August twentieth, this is the Regional Planning Commission meeting, we did our workshop at four o'clock, and now we are going to have the actual meeting, and, uh, we will start, uh, with the invocation by Mr. Issa, and then the pledge of allegiance will be, uh, done by, or led by commissioners, stand if you can.
God, we thank you for this day, we pray for the sick, our first responders who are out there protecting others, for the family of our sheriff, uh, Weatherford and his family, please be with them and keep your healing hand upon them at this difficult time, we look to your guidance as we conduct our business here tonight, and pray that it'll be pleasing to you, in your name we pray, amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Has anybody found any wrong in the mentions? Okay, so I would entertain a motion to approve, Mr. Belcher, and this is second, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? None? Okay, uh, does anybody have any changes, uh, that they would like to bring to the, uh, agenda, Mr. Issa?
Yes, sir, there, um, item number four, open space, they've made one final plan, um, this is just a very minor tweak, it's, it's not a change, but, um, I mean, initially, we didn't, that was sent out, uh, because the first bill we had, uh, had two open space lots, um, revisions to the plan, um, had food review process, and we know it's seven lots of open space, and so there's just a, a correction in there as the, in the description of the property, of the vessel.
Okay, any others? Uh, sitting in that, I would entertain a, a motion to approve, I'm Mr. Williams, second, Mr. Strong, all in favor, if you can say aye.
Aye.
opposed? None? There is unanimously. Alright, we have item number one, and Josh, I will let him go ahead and read.
Yes, sir, and Mr. We did have a public comment for item number eight, and we're requiring a public hearing, uh, we really want them to do a public hearing for each, I know we've done that the last couple of times.
I, I, I prefer that, just because it keeps the proximity closer and in front of mine.
Yes, sir. Uh, first item on the, the, the ceiling is a resuming request at one forty-two Sideview Road. Uh, this, this property is located in the side view community, uh, of, of the county, and is off of, uh, Highway Federal Avenue, uh, between, uh, Galton and Bethany, as you can see on the screen there, indicated. Property sits on about one point five six acres, uh, zone rural preservation at this time, it was recently rezoned, I'm not big talking about rezoned, uh, the, uh, resolution of the county commission recently, um, but the request at this time is what the county commission is to rezonate from rural preservation of RP, uh, to commercial neighborhood, and so this piece of property is, it's, it's peculiar in a lot of ways, and in terms of its, uh, history and its, uh, non-comformities, there are, there are currently four existing non-conforming structures on-site, um, these include a store building, a house, a barn, a fuel can. Uh, this property has a longstanding non-conforming partial use, um, there, particularly at the, uh, the convenience store, uh, those Sideview, uh, convenience store, I believe it was called something like that for a number of years, um, and actually, this, this actually went to the property itself, went to the BCA in June of twenty twenty, and the BCA made a, made a finding that this, this use, the, the convenience store use specifically, uh, predated the existence of zoning in some counties going back many, many decades. And so what that meant, there's a letter that I included, um, uh, to a, to a, I guess it was a prospective buyer at the time, um, but, the, the, the letter, uh, what it said is that the, the, the decision of the BCA, uh, was that the grandfather use that allowed operation of that convenience store on-site, um, and so that was back in the June of twenty twenty, so the grandfather, uh, legal non-conforming use, uh, what that means is, you can continue to operate in perpetuity as long as you don't change the use substantially. Uh, so, we reached out to the, the owner, and the, the less senior folks that are, that are operating the activity on the, on the site now, um, regarding, and I'll, I'll go and use, not much we got to call, or, or we had staff drive back to there, uh, but it looked like there were some things that were noted that didn't conform with those existing zoning entitlements, so the, uh, and that's the convenience store, that's what the BCA, um, noted was the, the grandfather use. Um, and to the staff that appeared, it's kind of like a hardware store, the market kind of thing, that was going on inside and outside of the, of the property, um, and it's still ongoing at this time, I believe, um, the property owner is Trinidad Florio, uh, map and project representative is John Haley, uh, joint property owner, who was notified by certified mail, uh, and is advertised in the Galton News, and is still standing on, obviously, in twenty twenty-four. So this is what we noticed, that was in the newspaper, uh, this is the subject property, uh, this is the boundary survey, uh, that's provided by the applicant, um, as I said, all the structures that are on it, all this property are non-conforming structures, um, so there's a, there's a fuel can of heat here, which is right on the line, it doesn't make setback requirements, a store likewise, it doesn't make setback requirements, uh, there's a, a house structure here that doesn't make setback requirements, and there's a barn back here that doesn't make setback requirements. Uh, so the lot obviously is unusually shaky, and that was part of the reason that it went to the borders of appeals, is they were looking to try to find a way to subdivide this lot, when they, when they did these, they, these homes here were, were subdivided, um, and, and they were looking to do that, and the BCA basically told them was, this was, if, if they, you know, if they did that, it could potentially involve the grandfather use essentially, so they wouldn't have pretty much a condition of use permit or anything else on this property, and the property owner just left it like it was, that lot just got left out there like it was, and the rest of the property got sold. Um, this is the beginning of its context here, um, so you see, it's surrounded, uh, by now, uh, in the last, uh, ten or fifteen years, by a shallow, uh, neighborhood here, uh, there's many storage across the way, um, this area out here is under planning and development, they used to be called Holland Seed, that are, that is, uh, what Holland's seed, something, I can't remember what it's called, but now it's Calico Jack, so they do boat sales, um, at this time, Rock Ridge Market is up the way right here. May return back to the plans on the property here in a minute, but what was proposed is, uh, I'm sorry, whether it proposed zoning, intended to be a partial neighborhood zoning district, uh, what it's intended to do is to provide for the, and I'll read this out of my own, uh, Mr. Chairman, provide for the types of commercial activities that can be located in close proximity to residential areas, and that may require shopping and personal service needs, um, both requirements of buffer expanders are intended to ensure the compatibility between adjoining nearby uses, um, in some instances, the district may also include a residential occupancy, and so an example of that would be, um, if you go up to, uh, uh, the Grand Ball Community, there's a little convenience store that's up there that has a, a dwelling attached to it, you should see that lot back in the back, and so that's, that's kind of what that's talking about with residential occupancy. Um, the commercial neighborhood, uh, zoning district has a relatively small, minimal size, however that is dependent on, uh, on setting, uh, availability of those sectors, so the lot might actually need to be a bit bigger than that, um, in order to, to do whatever you should, you could want to do there. Uh, the subject property is located in the side view community, as I said, um, the comprehensive plan essentially supports rezoning this location for a number of reasons, um, one is that it has long housed non-conforming commercial structures, um, so it's been stored there for, apparently, somewhere around a hundred years, um, off of, through, through, uh, through, through the years, as that road in front of it evolved from being a, a post-road to a old state highway to now, uh, a, a, a former state highway. Um, it's classified as crossroad, village center. Village Center, part of the conference plan. This little area is, as it is worth noting, the conference plan was developed before the Shiloh subdivision was approved, I believe. So it didn't necessarily envision subdivision going ahead back behind it. But the exact boundaries of that crossroad, the crossroads to Village Center are a little bit harder to figure out on the plane because of this resolution. But that area does appear to be, that this is partially, appears to be included at that. So here's the comp plan. Here's that whole red area, area of Sideview community, that's what it's talking about. So this is just more from the county conference plan. What it calls for is areas with a variety of land uses. Several essential commercial services mixed with smaller residential lots, natural stopping points for residents in an area for essential goods and services. If this is on the character of the city, it's important to make that a significant community. So the developed pattern is called a busper based on commercial and typically smaller residential lots. This is that store building that I was talking about. They said the fuel can is there. That's the zoning side that's put out. An old fuel can. You see, this is what caught the county's eye here. It had been operated as a store for a long time. As I mentioned, I think it ended up being a bagel, kind of a bagel shop, which was treaded line probably on the grandfather use. And then now it's this, which is not something that would be covered by that commercial, that grandfather use. So what we essentially told them was, what they were told was that if you want to do this kind of thing and operate this kind of use out of this property, you're going to have to rezonate. It's not allowed in a rural residential zone, and it's not covered under their grandfather zoning entitlement there. And this is that bar structure that they saw on the plan too. See the residential structure that's there as well on the parcel. One thing I did want to clarify from here, I don't believe there are any plans for any construction or any new businesses or anything that we're aware of at this time. The applicant is intent to see if they can speak to that, but there's no plans to build anything or do anything. Utilizing some of these, you know, that structure in particular for any kind of commercial use is going to be very problematic since it doesn't make any setback requirements or any other requirement. Utilizing, if you really utilize a lot of these structures, if they make substantial modifications to them, would be problematic because you get into civic questions and questions about where the locations of the fuel tanks are and those kinds of things. But that said, this, given that it took a longstanding grandfather commercial use, this has been a commercial use for a long time. It makes, it does make some sense to look at those objects at this location. And so that goes to your findings in fact. And maybe I'll get bored when they read through these, but we have these kind of findings of the fact that the plan we're supposed to take into account. One is whether to the extent, the extent to which the proposed amendment is consistent with the underground conference plan. It does appear to be compatible with the plan which calls for non-residential and communes commercial uses at this location. Whether at the extent to which there are changed conditions that require amendment, this has longstanding non-comfulmining uses and the development of the area in respect of your support to the zone change. Kind of like what we talked about with the residential side of things recently. The comp plan said it go over an incident that big part of the county, and there was never a follow-through on that. And the same thing could be said on all these centers and that kind of thing across the county. They called for certain commercial uses to be appropriated in certain areas. There was never a follow-through on the zoning side, actually, of any of those. And maybe it was decided it wasn't appropriate to do so, but that just wasn't something that was ever done. So number three, whether at the extent to which the proposed amendment addresses a demonstrated community need, this property, I think it could be argued that it's still relevant in the community. And additional residential growth, convenience, commercial, and those kinds of things are needed in the area. Four, whether at the extent to which the proposed amendment is compatible with the existing and proposed uses surrounding the subject property. Again, longstanding grandfather use on the site, surrounding residential with other non-residential uses, suggested it is the appropriate zoning district. But that said, the use that's going on now, kind of a hardware store type use side, might not be as compatible, especially to the way that materials just get stored outside. Five, whether at the extent to which the proposed amendment would result in a logical and orderly development pattern or be getting from in a logical and orderly development pattern. It would encourage an orderly development pattern that's supported by the comp plan. Whether at the extent to which the proposed amendment would encourage development prior to the availability of necessary services and infrastructure. So water, water is about what the location, sewer is a question. There are proper questions with the gas tanks and those kinds of things as well. But in general, the services that would be need to have made in store at this location appear to be available. Would the state highway be in proximity as well? Old Highway 31 is essentially a front end road at this location. Seven, whether at the extent to which the proposed amendment would result in the creation of an isolated zoning district related to adjacent and surrounding zoning districts. It would create a neighborhood partial zoning district that's in proximity to an existing neighborhood, which is the purpose of the neighborhood partial zoning district. Where other supporting uses such as storage are already in place. Eight, whether at the extent to which the proposed amendment would result in significant adverse impacts on property back use. We have not received a real estate appraisal or anything like that that indicates that. So there's a 63 Anderson County case that talks about things like appraisals. You didn't expert testimony to support whether property back could be impacted. Nine, whether at the extent to which it could result in adverse effects to the natural environment, water, air, stormwater, and wildlife, vegetation, etc., etc. No such negative impacts are anticipated. The life plan has been provided. I'm sorry, that's left over language. Stormwater would need to be addressed on site. And there's some leftover language about civic permits. I don't think that there's any record of the civic system for this lot on file. Maybe it's back so far. So we don't have that. So next steps, rezoning request to go to the legislative committee for two readings. My commission is being asked, but we're hit that my commission is being asked to make a recommendation here this evening. So it's not a low, upper down on the zoning. That is something else to the county commission. So the county commission will make a recommendation this evening. And we have a legislative for two readings. Then the full commission for a vote. They need to be sent back to the county commission at any step or at any point during that process. If it's approved, then the rezoning will become approved at that time if it's approved by the county commission. And then they would need to file a site plan to the planning commission in order to actually do anything. And so to kind of, one thing I did want to touch back on is I've got a couple of questions about that. For instance, if the property was rezoned and, go back to my area. Property was rezoned and somebody wanted to turn this barn into a mechanic shop or some kind of a use like that. What will be required is they would have to file a site plan application with the planning commission in order to do that. My recommendation as well is that they would need variance. They would need some kind of setback variance or something from the county board of zoning appeals petition as well. Because again, this, this structure is way within all the, it's within every, every law line around it. So there'd be a lot of variance. There are a whole lot of, a whole lot of buildings that have to be zoned for rules at the beginning if they wanted to utilize that particular building as a, for a commercial use. And we have been approached in the past about that. And that's the answer that we give them is that it's a, the answer is not ever known, but it's a path to get there, basically. And so I'm not sure if that's necessarily be allowed by right. Without taking a site plan, there would perhaps be a variance as well from the, from the planning commission. But there, from the fourth is I approve of it. So Mr. Chairman, there's the example motions on the screen. As I mentioned, the planning commission has been asked to make a positive or a negative recommendation here this evening. Like I said, I believe the applicant is intent to hear this evening. He can speak to it. And we have some folks who are signed up to speak as well.
Actually, before you start, you were not here when the tracks around it were subdivided, were you?
I was, for some of them, so.
That is the strangest lot I've ever seen, I think. How did that happen?
It did, that was, if I'm remembering right, that was just a lot. That was a lot unto itself at the time, I believe. And so it's been a few years, but this other piece down here was another lot. And so they came through, they wanted to divide off this or move the barn, divide this remaining piece. This is prohibited to these other lots. Due to the whole state law on these non-comfulmining uses and that kind of thing, it's pretty peculiar. And so if you start subdividing the lot, changing the lot, you can lose your entitlements, your grandfather entitlements on the lot. So they just left that lot alone. We did this, we see these kinds of really strange lots all over the place, how they get created. I don't know, it was never planned. It's been, it's a lot of record, it's been out there for a long time, if I'm right.
Do we know how old the store is?
Well, so during the discussion with the BCA back in 2020, it had, there had been a store there since at least the 1940s. It's what we were told at that time. Now, the building itself has been redone and remodeled and built on the two and all that over the years. I'm sure it has, you know, maybe it burnt down a little time years ago. We don't have anything in our files on anything like that. But the store itself has been there for many, many years.
Yeah, I know when I moved here in 1998, it was Sideview Market, a fully functioning gas station and convenience. And of course, there were no houses around it at the time. Okay, well, let's go ahead and hear from the public.
Sir. And Mr. Chairman, the first person signed up is Lee Robert Rauler. Mr. Rauler?
I would share a petition that was signed by folks that lived in the neighborhoods. There's a significant proportion of the residents that live in Sideview and Shiloh were opposed to this rezoning. I'm a commission member of the neighbors. My wife and I have lived in the Shiloh area since April of 2018. We enjoyed having the side of the market as part of the community. We're sad to see it closed in late 2019 and to hear the death of the owner in February of 2020. Beer and Bagel Cafes have welcome replacements, barring language from the county official's zoning resolution. Both these businesses were closed. Types of commercial activities that can be located in close proximity to residential areas and that meet recurring shopping and personal service needs. The current sales activity started with a few folding tables set up in the vacant lot of one of the six side views for a hodgepodge of shoes, clothing items, hand tools, and other small items displayed. I think most of the slots are temporary activities since it disappeared at the end of each day, was only present a few times. Then the activity spread into the store, in front of the store, on the sides of the store, in front of the old gas pumps, and under a series of top tenets of the vacant lot. Small area at the rear of one of the six side views spent again, a couple of goats and other farm animals appeared. Vehicles are parked in the roadway and two large dirt with cluttering yard sales signs replaced with the Sideview Road turnoff from 31E, exacerbating the difficulty of steering oncoming traffic from the north, driving drivers exiting onto 31E. After a few weeks of this, apparently the owners learned that some of the aspects of the operations were in violation of zoning regulations. The vacant lot, which is owned for residential use, was clear for sales by no exception for stacking pile pallets and the field of goats. Items for sale are now in the store and stacked in tables adjacent to the store and in front of the store. Items on the bathtubs and stainless sinks are leaning against the side of the store, and the gas pumps serve as display racks for doors, as I think you've seen in the photographs. Most of these items are visible 24/7 regardless of the operating hours of the store. Items in the tables and the walkway in front of the small parking area in the north side of the store are covered with tar and the same as clothes. So why are we opposed to this business? Aside from it being a high store at the gateway to our community, why should an ongoing yard sale be allowed in a rural residential area when the zoning regulations for our residential neighborhood prevent yard sales for personal household items from residents or properties growing in the same zone lot as a dwelling unit, but only if first, the sales occur no more than three days in any 90-day period, and second, no more than four times a year? All that said, I think most of us really don't care what's sold inside the store. But we do care whether it's displayed outside the store. Again, the regulations should apply. Quote, "For all group non-residential uses within the rural residential and rural preservation districts, other than listed," and there are others that are listed. "Exterior storage of goods, materials, and other property is prohibited." In addition, the regulations for neighborhood commercial districts state that, quote, "Exterior displays permitted provided that no portion of the display may be within required landscape areas or buffer areas, or with any required parking areas." In addition, "The goods, materials, or other property offered for sale in the exterior display area must be of such a nature that they are not typically located within a permanent building or structure, such as vehicles, trailers, parking equipment, and landscaping supplies. Other than a longbow that was on an outdoor display recently, I don't believe that any of the items currently on display meet this criteria." As mentioned earlier, parking is another issue. The residents of the dwelling on 142 Sideview behind the store have several cars. During operating hours of the store, there appear to be several additional cars present related to the store tenant and/or his employees. While there's a gravel parking area on the opposite side that's speaking from the store, that property belongs to the owners of the Sideview storage facilities and may not always be available. Since there are no clear parking delineations other than for the bar and account parking space, cars often park along the side of the narrow road, sometimes in keeping safe traffic. It's incumbent from individuals operating the business to properly research the regulations pertaining to their intended business. Some business operators survey the adjacent neighborhood neighborhoods prior to opening to determine if there are potential customers, as well as to learn if there are objections to their operations. As a hope of pointed out, advanced research is not done in this operation. So now we're all here reacting to that line of research. I'll conclude with a preparation of legislative intent of zoning regulations. Please make no decision that will be injurious to the surrounding neighborhood. Thank you for your attention.
This is Marcia Kitten.
If we could refrain from applause, I would be unable to.
Hello, my name is Marcia Kitten, and I'm a resident of Shiloh. When we moved there in 2020, the little shop, or I'm sorry, yes, in 2022, the little shop was a bagel shop. Cute little shop. When we first drove into the neighborhood, I thought, oh, how cute. You can walk down here, have coffee, have a bagel, and welcome. Perfectly appropriate for our neighborhood. Then I see, I turned down my street and out there is a flea market. And I'm like, what is going on here? There were cars parked everywhere. I could barely get off Highway 31 in. I'm sure a lot of you know, it's very heavily traffic now going all the way up to that page. So trying to turn right into Sideview and then go home is a challenge when there's cars parked all over the street. You're a hazard by getting, if you would get hit on 31E. And it's just not an appropriate location for a commercial business. It is a residential rural neighborhood. When I looked at the house, I was like, oh, how wonderful to find some land, a beautiful neighborhood in a rural community that was so welcoming, friendly. And to have a business like this go in and you drive in and you feel like you're And to have a business like this go in and you drive in and you feel like you're at a flea market or you feel like it's Stanford inside. You know, I know some of you are too young to understand that comment, but it's just not appropriate in a neighborhood. Besides the fact that the roads are not designed for heavily trafficked, constantly breaking the roads, getting puddles, having to have the county come out and refill the puddle. The additional traffic is not appropriate, again, for a rural community. We have kids that go to school and walk the neighborhood and ride their bikes. Again, not an appropriate area for a commercial business. The storage unit, you never see anybody at the storage unit. And if they do, they have plenty of room to pull in and do whatever they're doing at the storage unit. There is no parking there. They park all over the place. There are no handicap parking. And I just, the buses can't get through and the roads are blocked. And it just, again, it's not an appropriate place for in a rural neighborhood. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the next person to sign this speech is Paul Jones, Jr., name on Jimmy. Is it Jimmy? Stop this, stop this, sorry.
Hi, I'm Jimmy Goode, some resident of the Shiloh neighborhood as well. Going to reiterate, as already been said, our biggest concern is traffic flow. Some of the images that you saw before, if you can scroll back to where it was seen from the Highway 31 interstate sign and then the turn in. That's our biggest concern, traffic turning into the neighborhood, having a congestion here of, you know, anytime you go to see a yard sale sign, gets people's attention. You know, you get a lot of traffic flow coming in. It bottlenecks into our neighborhood. It creates just mega backup. Some say, in our neighborhood, it's full of families. It's full of kids. The house next door, the side view market, has children. They're out on the streets. They're on bicycles. They're on scooters. It's just a matter of time before something bad happens. So, we're trying to prevent that. We want to raise concern. And if that's something, then there's a case study that means to go in and let's do a case study on traffic flow. Let's see if this is going to be a valid, you know, commercial business. And if not, then it's not right fit for our neighborhood. That's all.
Mr. Chairman, the next person to sign this speech is Indy Cruz.
Hi, I'm Indy Cruz. I also live inside view. I'm Indy Cruz. I also live inside view. We've been there almost nine years. And I agree with everything everyone already said, so there's really not much more to say. But in my opinion, this is something that does not belong in the neighborhood. To me, it's an eyesore. All the items, the sinks and the bathtubs and the doors. It's a business, and I wish them luck, but it just doesn't belong in a neighborhood. And I agree with the traffic. Some of the people aren't familiar with our neighborhood. So, they'll know where to park. And within the first week, somebody already knocked down a stop sign. It was there. We have a badge flying, the signs. It just doesn't belong in a neighborhood. That's just my opinion, and it's obviously a lot of the neighbors' stuff.
Mr. Chairman, the next person to sign this speech is Jeff Cecil.
Thanks so much for your time today. Appreciate it. I got a couple of comments and conditions to consider. Our community is a walking community. We meet most of our neighbors because we walk the community. If you leave from the Presbyterian Church, so we're in the corner of, we're 1004 Caballo. We're in the corner right there, so we see everything. Our backyard makes up the side view. We roll up Shiloh. And so, if you start at the Presbyterian Church, you walk around the entire neighborhood. If you go down to the Kalko Jackson, then you go all the way back down to the, all the new housing past the store, down the road in the back, it's three miles, actually, three more to 5K. Because we did a Woody Warrior up there a few weeks back during COVID. But we're a walking community. If you're walking down side view, there's parents pushing their kids down side view. There are cars coming down. Again, Woodward House, we see a lot. And they come racing down that street when there's people walking. It's very dangerous. The other problem is that we're getting into, I've been there since 2019. We're getting into people just kind of meeting at the church and exchanging things. We actually had a couple, police a couple times because they're just sitting there in their little low lighters and, you know, cars, and they're just kind of hanging out. We've never had that before until the store started, you know, having that capability, that kind of product of the rough. The second thing is, I'd like to make attention is that when we moved into the neighborhood, built our houses in the neighborhood, we had to come to an agreement that we would follow certain rules in the neighborhood. One was like, you couldn't have certain animals. You couldn't have a shed. You didn't make really kind of match your house. Your pool had to be in your own bathtub. The reason for all these rules is because we want to keep the value of the homes intact. We didn't want the homes to be devalued. What this does to our neighborhood is it goes directly against all that agreement that we put before when all these people moved in, and we would not do that. And so, I think that's the other problem that I handle some things that it really does cost eyesore. And although it's not the longer to that devaluing coverage, then if it goes long term, we look good. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Chairman, the next person to sign this speech is, I'm sorry about listening to your words, Francy.
Hi there. Welcome. Multiple pass rockers do not make this decision right. It puns the best use of this piece of property because of the shape and the location and the setbacks is residential. I happen to live adjacent to the barn, and in the past 10 years, the roof of that barn has blown off and been in our neighborhood twice. It is not a safe functioning structure. That's it.
Mr. Chairman, the last person to sign this speech is Mr. John Bailey at that.
Hi, guys. I am releasing, first of all, I want to thank everyone in the side view and Shiloh community for coming to speak and sharing their views and points and much noted. And first of all, the first thing I'd like to say is, is our main goal and purpose is to be able to bring jobs to Sumner County. Okay, when we started off, and there's been confusion too, I'd like to clear up. There's some things that we're being blamed for and that people think it's us that aren't us or this is our fault. So, let's start with that and I'll kind of come back to, you know, to my statement. First of all, we have absolutely no plans of building additional structures, doing anything with the barn, adding storage. There's no future plans, no mechanic shop there. That's not us. As you said, that was talked about before, but that was not us. That was part of us. And that has nothing to do with resuming that we're trying to do. The yard sale portion was confusing, a confusion. We were renting the field before we were renting the store. And we were told those are two separate, the field and the barn were separate properties. You guys showed them all as one decent property, but regardless, we rented both the barn and the store. And we started off, we worked at a yard sale on the weekends in the field. Then we got access to the store and we transitioned, we went to the store. You just like to see it in Lowe's, Walmart, Home Depot, you know, Dollar General, the stores that we purchased our materials from. They also have seven outside things around the store. We tried to clean those things up. We cleaned the property up. There used to be snakes, mice, grassless. You know, it was knee-high, even across the street. We cleaned all that up. We tried to clean things up, you know, more around the community as well, be a part of that. We are community members. We're in Rockland area, my family and I. And again, back to trying to create jobs for Sumner County. We, you know, we used to walk communities in Nashville, today it's in county. It's been a work. And we wanted to try to, in Wilson County, we wanted to try to bring more jobs here. We'll provide a service, again, the products from the companies we explained. You buy, you know, overstock, sometimes open box, in the season clear out. So, there's still new, there's not yard sale items. The yard sale is something separate. That was before. These are not used yard sale items. These are new items that we sell from the places that it's made. And, you know, we're just trying to offer these products, discount service, you know, for the community. As far as the traffic, I do agree that that needs to be addressed with the street because of the activity that that was before us. That was even doing the field. And if I'm being honest, a lot of those members would have subvention and spoke about those problems. We've even feared for our life a couple of times when we're outside, when it's a work and there were, you know, incidences where people literally act like they're going to shop when it's over, going to warn, yelling things at us. We've had some very, very negative feedback from, you know, from some of the community members there. But on the other hand, we've had some positive feedback as well. We've had people come in talking about buying bologna sandwiches, you know, their entire life. And they'd love to see that come back. And Sideview Market was really built in 1878. It's featured on a couple of different albums and a rendition even on Elvis albums, one on the Smith Brothers album. The store has a lot of history and talking to a lot of people in the community, you know, they'll tell you, you know, hey, we want to bring that back. I mean, that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to bring Sideview Market back, but also, again, have discounted goods. You know, we talked about maybe future brings of sandwiches back and some of those things that Scott Franklin spoke of earlier in the past. We try to, you know, try to bring some of those things back as well. Again, just a store to be able to, you know, bring services and goods to the community discount rate. And that's all we're trying to do, just trying to resell the building for that purpose. Not trying to build any additional structures, not trying to do anything else. So, that's it. Thank you.
If the building was true, it was built in 1878, it was a store. It is, like I say, I live on Brandon, which is a mile away, or probably about a mile away. And in the 25 years I've lived there, it's, it was first Sideview Market. There was, where I think the boat shop was, there used to be a tour and dive shop there. But that's long gone. Let's take it down. We did something like this recently with Bethpage. There was a man who came in and he wanted to have the property resumbed. Everything, pretty much, in the county is rural residential from what I can tell. And all of these old buildings that were commercial buildings were just some rural residential for lack of anything else. And this building, obviously, was commercial a long time. It seems to me that the people don't have such a problem if it's a bagel shop or a convenience center. They have a problem with what's being sold there now. And Josh, is there, the zoning that they're applying for, is there specific applications or businesses that can be in that and specific that cannot?
Yeah, so the type of uses, it's pretty extensive. But the way that I would extract a commercial neighborhood is it's a, it's a commercial zoning district. It's very restrictive. And so, this particular use that's going on here now, it's a little bit of an interpretive kind of a thing. But we looked at it and I would probably categorize it as a hardware store. And so, a hardware store is, we call that general retail trade. And on our zoning code, in one of the penises, there's a table. A general retail trade and structures of less than 5,000 square feet are, is allowed in this commercial neighborhood zoning district. And so, they would be able to have this use. If this resuming was approved, they would be able to do this use. Now, they would have to bring the property into compliance as far as outdoor storage and all that stuff. They'd have to really revisit the way that they're dealing with a lot of that stuff. But this comes up in the commercial neighborhood right now. It's up for rural residential. And so, you're not allowed to do general retail trade in the rural residential zone at all. Can't go to the board of zoning bills and give them a report before you can't do that. So, with the current zoning that they have now, they can't do what they're doing. They can't do it. And so, it's not permitted. The use is not covered by the grandfather statute. I don't think the law is completely applicable later in the industry, but my interpretation is that it's not covered by the grandfather status of the law. It's not allowed in the rural residential zone. And so, that's how they ended up where you got today is, you know, they needed to see the zoning that would allow them to do things that they're wanting to do there right now. And the commercial neighborhood would allow that with certain restrictions.
So, when it, when it was Sideview Market, it was a gas station and convenience center. Was that allowed?
That was, that was, the grandfather, the board of zoning builders did a formal finding on that, that it was a legal non-conforming use or a grandfather use that redated zoning in Sumner County. So, the big grandfather did, you have to redate the regulations basically that are in effect.
So, the way it sits right now, if that was turned back into a gas station and a convenience center, that would be a legal use?
I think as long as the use hasn't ceased, and if we include the bagel shop, the stuff that they were doing there is along the same lines. If the use ceases for 30 months per state law, this is the statute. If the use ceases for 30 months, the grandfather status is lost.
So, we're learning a whole bunch.
And so, if, if, if you, so that, what that means, if we see this a lot where there may be some old roadside commercial use that's been sitting there since 1995, you know, it's fallen down. Then folks will look into it and want to know if they can utilize the, as a grandfather name. And if it's not been operated the last 30 months, it's not, it's not a grandfather name, is what we tell them.
So, with, with the use that's being done there right now, which is not allowed, if we give a positive recommendation to the legislature and to the commission for this, what would have to change on the property? There's parking issues. There's outdoor storage issues. Obviously, can't do anything about the barn. It's locked. You can't even get around it. There's a residential home on it. So, in the long run, something like that.
I think what we would have to have is, as a, when it's a grandfather use, it's more the same that the legislature meant well, but they created problems with all their grandfather stuff that they resolved. So, they can, you know, you can make changes to the property. You can expand. You can tear down, rebuild. You can do all those things when this grandfather did. But on something like this, they got the zoning changed and all the grandfather stuff out the window. They're probably under a big, under the current regulations. We have to have a site plan that will be filed with the county. There's jurisdictions to that building and all that stuff. So, there's, there would be a site plan that will be filed. It's going to show parking locations, vacant parking, anything else that's needed. They've got some of that there already. Areas for exterior storage where they're going to keep things, you know, probably behind it, what's going to be get where. Landscaping plan will even be done to show what the plantings that they're going to do and those kinds of stuff, those kinds of things. And all that will cover the planning commission and all. And it might be something that can be very administratively, but with all the neighborhood interest, we probably insist on bringing it to the planning commission for public approval. And so, there would be another degree of public oversight there basically on how they get the site set up.
One of the speakers talked about something that sounded almost like the homeowners association. Is there a homeowners association in that development?
I'm not 100% sure on that.
There's not.
I think that they have, they have pretty robust private restrictions, but we've never dealt with it in HOA. They were letting issues years ago and stuff like that, but I don't think it's ever been in HOA.
It's not covered. So, the restrictions would not apply to this lot now for me?
No, thanks, sir.
Okay, and that's my question so far. So, Rob, you ready?
Yes, I'd like to ask is the, because of the questions and the issues that's been raised by Josh, is the owner of the property here in Chatham tonight?
Yes, he is.
It would be, it would be nice and it would be good for me, I expect for everybody else, if the owner of the property would take a moment and come up here and address, please address the issues that would arise as a result of the resuming, if it was approved. Could they do that? Thank you.
Mr. Wolf, Mr. Warner, do we need to suspend the rules to do that?
He never closed the hearing, so I think you probably get that.
Okay, would you come up here?
Of course, I think this is important here. It's not a native English speaker, so I think that's a difficult to hear.
We'll give it a try.
What I'd like, what I would ask is that could you please address the improvements that would have to be made if the property, if the property was rezoned to commercial, community commercial, is that correct?
Commercial neighborhood, yes.
Yes. Because there, and the reason I ask that, the reason I ask, and I'm trying to be fair, is that, uh, Josh has given a garden variety of improvements that would have to be made, variances that have to be given. And this is very costly. So my question to, is, is how would you address those improvements that would need to be made? Is that something you as the owner would do? Are you willing to do that?
Anything, anything that needs to be done, we would, we would be willing to do it. Any improvement that needs to be done in, in a, in order to be able to product management, we would be willing to do it. Anything that needs to be done, yeah, of course. Like in parking spaces or whatever needs to be done. I think now not outside to be, anybody to be driving there. I think anybody driving by there need, know how to drive. So I don't think any, any dangers for anybody in the neighborhood. I don't think we're gonna run by any, anybody driving by. Any, gonna be, uh, for anybody in the neighborhood. Yeah, I don't think any kid riding a bicycle, I think about the rider, or my, I'm really willing to respect any signs. Yeah. So anything that needs to be done to be able, we will, we are willing to do it.
Go ahead, Mr. Belgium. Josh, if this were rezoned with a setback problem, does that mean the existing structures would have to be demolished and new ones built to accommodate?
It is. On the historic structure, I'd, the main, the primary structure, I, I would be hesitant to. Um, I think, you know, like on that barn structure in particular, the thing, if somebody wanted to use that for something, there's going to be a whole lot of improvements that have to be made to that structure. And so we would probably want to try to work with the property owner to have that structure taken out as part of this, if and if at all possible. Um, we have, we're seriously concerned with it being utilized, bringing out the commercial purpose. Um, the other structures, um, you know, but the store itself certainly, that, you know, predates, I mean, the rest of those structures, that farm probably got put there. I don't, I maybe didn't, it never had permit, you know, so I, I've never checked on, on that status of all the, of the house and all those other structures that are there. I mean, I don't, I don't see as requiring, if requiring them to tear the house or the, uh, uh, the, uh, store itself down. Uh, because, uh, there's just not really rational reasons to require that necessarily. Um, depending on what they do, I mean, if there's additions or changes or anything like that, like as I mentioned at the beginning, they, they may be, they may end up going to the VCA for a variance or something. I can, I can see something like that. But I, I would, I would have more time to see if the VCA requires somebody to tear anything down. That's my point of view.
And regarding the thirty months, do we know if that has expired yet? In other words, if it's not rezoned, if that, the thirty month period has expired, then they can't reopen a convenience store, correct?
That would be correct. That'd be correct. If it's, and, and so this is the, um, this stuff can get, it can get really, really, really complicated. Uh, but, uh, what we would typically do, the burden proof is on the property owner. It's on the county. It never is. And so, uh, what we've done in the past is we've worked with the property owner to try to determine when it was the last time that that particular use was, was done. We've had people turn over, you know, uh, records and access spreadsheets and stuff like that to document, you know, like, uh, pay stubs and they paid employees and those kinds of things. And so what we, what we want to do is figure out when the, uh, the bagel place that was there, when that, when that went out of business, when, when they ceased operations there. Uh, this year. And so, so you've got, you've got to give it time.
And in fact, I'm just addressing the issue again. I, I think, um, looking at what we have in the survey, it shows that the barn is a different lot than where the store is. It shows those are two separate properties and that's, kind of adds understanding as well. And again, our proposal, we, we're not trying to do anything with the barn. We think that is just a storage. That has nothing to do with the store and what we're trying to do with the store. That's still selling residential and, and we're not requesting to change that zoning.
Well, Mr. Sherman, if it's being used for storage, I would clarify that it, that it's part of the use. If it's being used, unless it's a personal storage or something like that, that is related to the use, then it would be. And so we, if questions on that, all we had going on this is, is this boundary survey here.
Sure.
And so this is, this is the boundary survey that we have, the garden survey that, that a while back. I have seen something on an old tax report that, that did show this two parcels. And so there's, there's, uh, I, I don't know whether it actually is or not, but it may have been one time.
What you, if, if you can remember what you saw, was it just the finger that was the step on the lawn?
I think so, pretty much. And if I, if I remember right, um, and for whatever reason, Mr. Palmer here didn't show them. It looks like on here, you see parcels, oh, one and oh, three, and somebody doesn't show where, uh, where those law lines are. So there's, there's a little bit more to the story, I guess. And in the notice and all that stuff, we did, we did reference those, both parcels on there. But the boundary survey, which was the exhibit that was definitely had to this, chose it all as one.
Is the house being used right now? Is it?
It's being leased out residential.
To, to a different party?
Yes, not us. Again, we're, store market only, so.
Okay. Uh, have you given any thought of, uh, site plan in the event that, that this goes through?
Sure, sure. About it. One of the things, a couple of things that, that we, you know, would like to propose with Detective Stone is, is changing where the pumps are, kind of, fencing that area off and closing where the doors are, uh, around the pumps there and then having the parking, because that's where the parking is right now anyways, in front of the pumps. And labeling that as parking, actually picking up parking spaces, having that parking, then those doors won't be visible from the street. Those are being closed. We also talked about, and this, these are things that, you know, once it get, if, if the zoning takes place, that we would definitely like to propose. But again, a possible overtime on the right to put the jobs and things in, and then on the area to the left that we were speaking of, basically the same thing about a two hundred foot structure, just to be able to close things up there. Some of those things up there. So again, all this, there, you know, there's plans and workings, but, you know, those things take time and have been stopped by that because of the rezoning issue. So we're kind of at a pause until this goes through. We can't, can't do any of those things right now.
Right.
Of course, we're talking about reskin and dressing up and painting and just, just overall making it look better. We've, we've got some, we have some future plans. We just can't, can't be further into it.
Well, I think you all know my opinion on historic buildings, so I won't go into that whole thing, uh, because we will be making the decision. But I, I think all historic buildings are worth saving. Go ahead, Mr. Strong.
Uh, yes. Uh, in, um, in response to the, uh, rezoning, uh, we did, we've kind of been hopping around about another issue. And I wanted to break up and talk about costs, you know, cost involved in a rezoning program. Just, we're just talking, we're laying out everything on the table. The county, one of the county's gas pumps, one of the gas pumps, gas tanks, which are a potential environment hazard. Uh, has, has, uh, is the owner aware that with this rezoning and inspections, that there may be a possibility that those hold out? They did fuel tanks may have to be removed, which is very expensive. Just wanted to make, just to talk about all of that.
I haven't checked it down and they haven't said anything about that. So what we need to do, uh, to bring back the fuel pump to work in, but probably in the future for mine, I'm not sure. But, um, yeah, you know, it's basically to move all those things under, under the ground. So at this point, I'm ready to do that. So then I don't think for the business they are doing, it's not necessary to be removed.
Those inspections are required every three years and those inspections.
Do you have any, or I don't know.
We have absolutely no intentions, like he said, of, of using those right now for us. And if, now that's, it's most wants to do, we're doing a future fine. But for us, as we see, I have no interest right now in doing that. Again, those, those are a personal experience.
The business, it has been always been in there, so I don't think we would disturb any, uh, the peace of the neighborhood because traffic's been, always been going through and I don't think it's going all the way down to the neighbors. So I don't think the neighborhood should be, uh, be worried about that because business, car being going all the way, all being, all the sign that being the traffic, it's been going through and they, the traffic that's going to the neighborhood, so they don't have to be worried about it.
Mr. Sun, are you familiar with the Red Wolf, with the fuel tank or, or that's something that comes to the county?
No, sir. That's stuff by TDEX, uh, Division of Groundwater Resources, I think. So that's, I think they have a separate, uh, fuel tank inspection for the, even if that issue might have been fixed.
But you're verifying that there are no issues with the fuel tanks?
No, they're not issues.
Okay. Mr.?
Mr. Chairman, like, two questions, kind of, probably break the tone, Mr. Sun is. Does changing the zoning, if I'm, I'm kind of reacting to what's coming in here from the community, does that allow for greater enforcement of things like outdoor storage if that's changed or does it not really?
Well, uh, well, under the current zone, they, they can't do what they're doing there. All they have to back up, Joe, basically. And so, uh, you can't do any exterior storage, uh, or exterior displaying, um, in the rural residential zone, unless you have a condition which permits for the board of zoning deals. There's certain, certain chances, it's very narrow where you can do things like that. But it's very, like, within the, the, the commercial zones, it's, that is the general grid from the, the zoning resolution. There's some limited, limited permissible ability of doing exterior storage and that kind of thing. We can't just have to pile up, but, but you can, you can do more.
Even commercial people?
Right, indoor storage, that's right, yes, yes.
Uh, second question was, I heard a lot of hopeful people about maybe a sandwich shop or things coming back from nostalgia. Uh, does the current zoning allow for something like that or would they have to get it?
They, 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 they don't, the grandfather stuff, like, it's a monkey wrench, everything, but if, if this is a big parcel out in the county, it's a bit of a zone, rural residential, rural residential, that's why I want to open a sandwich shop. They would have to rezonate in order to do that because it's a, it's a, it's a commercial use. It's not compatible necessarily. Um, and, and, in, 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 in the R R zone by right. And so, uh, it, it, that's like the one we need a local community really in the county commission to weigh in on it because it's a significantly changing use.
I think, can I clarify one thing also, which is addressing the first question you asked, with any outdoor structures? And, and look at those, like we were talking about, you know, rapid pumps and, you know, putting, I think, there's concrete pad, that's all on concrete already. We're not looking to do anything over two hundred square feet, which would require permit, whether it be residential or commercial use. So it would all be in compliance with those.
I, I think the thing we have to be cognizant of here is that, and this is no disrespect to the tenant, but the tenant could be gone tomorrow. What about the property? And should the property be zoned regardless of who the tenant is? Or like the one speaker said, this is really a residential lot now. I, I've watched airports and historic things disappear when residential moved into, and, and there's always a controversy here. But, you know, one of the things that we talked about in the work session was to preserve. And I feel strongly about that. I know some of you do too. So what, what we need to address is not the people who are involved as much as what's right for the neighborhood and what's right for the preservation of our history and those things as well. So I think that's where the debate needs to go.
So one point, and y'all, y'all agree the whole thing, I know it kind of drawn with them, but one, one of the key questions, if you guys really, the, the framework here, if you guys have been asked to look at is, uh, let's see, right here, number four. So whether and the extent to which the proposed development is compatible with the existing and proposed uses surrounding such a property. And this is the key phrase here, is it the appropriate zoning district for the land? And so on something like this, if you guys have a lot of heartburn about this, we call it straight zoning, you know, it's a C N, a straight zoning C N designation. What you guys find, the, the property owner now going to do is to instead look at planning and development. If you guys want to see very, very specific plans on exactly what they're going to do on this property and how they're gonna, where they're going to keep stuff, where they're going to store things and that kind of thing. If that's something that y'all want, would rather see, would make it, would give you a lot more comfort, then maybe PUD is the appropriate zoning district for the land where you have a whole lot more certainty in that regard. And then the range of uses can be even better, you know?
Well, currently right across the street from this building is many storage, right?
Zone industrial.
So that's zone industrial. So it's not like this zoning would be a, a, a total pink elephant in, in, in that area. And, you know, to understand that though, that is Old Highway thirty one E and it goes right past an historic church that's been there for a long, long time. So, you know, this is, all, these are all things to grapple with. And, and, uh, so anyway, I, I won't leave any other questions for the owner. Go ahead, Mr. Strong.
Being objective and, and, and making sure that the owner understands that a potential rezoning could, could provide a significant layout of, of, of expenses to come into, to come into compliance with the rezoning. I'm talking about that. On the subject side, I've patronized the place many times at the bagel shop, I'll be honest with you. And, um, uh, I understand the historical significance of that location and how it fits into the community. And I'm, I'm pretty, I'm pretty, uh, in touch with those comments that, that were made. But trying, trying to, trying to stay objective, uh, if, I, I, I question, and Josh, you probably may comment on this. If this rezoning happens, would, would we potentially lose any type of historical, uh, preservation or value or options with a rezoning?
Oh, I think if it's zoned or if it's not zoned, I think the property owner can tear it down. They won't do anything they won't do. If, if this is their building, if it's not in a historic overlay or it's, you know, on the national register or anything like that. So I think they would have the ability, this is a barn, I know, it's, I think, maybe there is something, but I don't know anything there. And so I think it's, it's their building. They can leave here and knock it down, but they won't do it. I mean, they, they, they need a demolition permit from the county before they tear it down, but that's it.
So that is another thing to consider. There's no guarantee that that building will stay now or tomorrow. So, uh, Josh, can you speak a little more of the P U D concept?
Sure. Um, so planning and development, that's a big scary term that when people hear it, they think park complexes and townhouses and, you know, all kinds of stuff. But what, what it is, is that we call it PUD. That's P U D, planning and development. Um, at other places, it's called S P, specific project planning. And so what, what it is, is it's essentially a, a plan sheet or several plan sheets that show, um, what the plan for the property is. And so it could be anything. It could be as broad as they want it to be or narrow, generally PUD's very narrow because they want to be tried to get approved. And so it's a plan that shows what's there, what they want to do in the future, the things they want to change about the property. Um, and a table of allowable uses as well, um, that, that, you know, let's say that C N zoning allows this much stuff, showing this. Uh, the, the planning development, they may buy, they, they may voluntarily take a whole lot of those out and then, and leave it to two or three or four uses instead. And so it's, it's, all it is, is just a specific plan on a piece of property where they show you exactly what they're going to do. And that's all they can do. And if they want to do something else, they have to amend the plan, uh, which is a significant amendment back to the planning commission. It goes back to the county commission. They have to have a neighborhood meeting and it's a whole thing. And so it's a, it's. And so it's a, it's a really strong protection for the neighborhood, for the county, for the property owner, too. Because they have a lot of the tile and some of those things. Uh, and so the, the flow process is something that, that, that people, people gravitate toward quite a bit. Versus the, the straight zone, commercial neighborhood, commercial services, commercial general, light infrastructure, et cetera. Where there's a whole bunch of stuff you can do, and as long as you meet your requirements, you can just go do it.
All right. Go ahead, Mr. Belcher.
Oh. Being objective, the people living in the neighborhood next door knew what they were getting when they moved in with the convenience store, the sandwich shop, and that nature. The curb use wasn't what they backed on when they bought those apartments, uh, and moved in. So, you know, I, I feel for the owners or the leasing, everything, but I can't support this. I mean, they're too, I think it would open Pandora's box as to what could be done. A PUD, maybe, but, uh, you know, this is, you know, it's, it's, the use doesn't comply with the grandfather status of it. And I just can't support, so. I'd like to make a motion to draw a negative recommendation.
I'd like a second day motion. We have a motion in a second, and we have any questions on the proposal government motion? That, okay, uh, that being the situation, uh, go ahead, Jim.
Commissioner Holmes? Mr. Williams? Mr. Issa?
Yes.
Mr. Belcher?
Yes.
Mr. Sudd?
Yes.
Okay. So that will be a negative recommendation that could be turned over by the legislative or by the county commission, correct?
Right, they can refer it back, um, they can refer it back if they, if they wish to. Um, the property owner also has the option. And we'll follow up with them, uh, this weekend. Uh, they might want to modify their proposal, they may want to pursue a planning and development zoning or something like that. And so we, we're always ready to work with folks.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was gonna ask, because, uh, I do think it's an historic thing that, that should be preserved. Because it's one of the last parts of, of Old Thirty-One-E, and it's still there. And it, it matches well, I think, with the church, I mean, they're from very different times. So, okay, we'll, we'll follow up on this, so, okay. Thank you, thank you everybody. Okay, Mr. Sudd?
Yes, sir.
I have number two.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda is Lauderdale Land Day Final Flat. Um, this is a, a pretty unique development, um, something that, uh, really was one of the reasons that we came up with rural estate cross-section. Um, so it's something that, um, I, I won't speak for anybody else, but it, you know, when we see a lot of five acre farm guts, they're really bizarre sometimes. And black lots and acres and weird stuff. Um, this is something that we wish to pull a function, to be honest, it's, it's, it's something that's, it's a good approach to land development. It gives everybody a good level of road to have access to those kinds of things, to solve a lot of administrative headaches. So anyway, I'm going off, I'm on my track. It's a, I love the line, because I agree with you. Yeah, I guess. So it's a love line, it's only sixty acres. Uh, this is the overall, the evidence up there, uh, before, that's about like the last that they've taken off the, uh, all the existing Lauderdale land, road footage. Um, started out under an eight acre tract, but this time it's like, next sixty acres. Um, on Lauderdale Land, Old Well Road, it's all a rural reservation. Castings, Brink, Bed Bath Utilities, uh, or it is a utility provider here, of these lots, for the safety systems. Um, owned by Martin, Martin Smith, Project Server, George Thomas, investor, I saw him in the audience here this evening. Uh, project engineer, very little design. Uh, this is such a rural place type, part of the county's town for instance, plan. Um, the zoning is, is, is rural preservation as well. Um, and so there's only developed road, the biggest road, sorry, that has been in construction, uh, for this, the cross section anyway. Um, it's installed, but this time utilized in that rural state road cross-section. Uh, this is the context that appears, it's, uh, fairly relevant part of the county here. Um, somewhere between, y'all, uh, what's one, or y'all, that's paying, that way. Um, this is the aerial view of the subject property. Uh, they're not proposing any access out here on the, uh, Old Well Road. Anyways, over here, this was a more interesting drive crossings in the county. Uh, it's actually kind of, I think, uh, but it's, uh, they will access it out on the other way. And so this is something that somehow I looked at the, uh, I had questions about this, uh, the accessory office, and, uh, with the shape file for the overall partition of the property. This is not, some of these areas are wrong, um, and, and many ways the county engineer had the idea of it on the assessor site, um, showing the overall layout. But, uh, this is the state tract approved in July of twenty twenty-two. Uh, preliminary was approved in, uh, September twenty twenty-two. And this is that final flat. So these, these other five acre lots, I mentioned, have been divided off by right, they can do that by the, um, the required lots that are on, they've helped their road, they'll be platted, and, and so that's what they've got here. Uh, this is the new, the future candy road has been installed, but when I turned road the other day, utilizing the rural state cross-section, I'm most opposed as well. Uh, the road is installed, it wants to change completion, uh, by, uh, based on all down. Uh, top road would be installed later on, in a couple of years, probably, or they build this thing out. Um, as built, and then, uh, I believe, Mr. Besters said they shot that as built on the, on the road, just to confirm it is where it's supposed to be. Um, we'll, we'll get that prior to recording the plan. Uh, we did have to have a surety posted, I believe, but we never, hasn't actually. And I got an email from the, uh, from the owner with a copy of the, we have to have the original. But, uh, the county engineer sent over a surety letter for seventy-six thousand eight hundred dollars, or it has been posted prior to the final recording. Uh, so, so I think we already had it. Uh, all these lots are over five acres, uh, public water is available with this location. And again, on subject takes, uh, that intention is required or anything, and it is very large, lot size. And it is, it puts lots into a, a couple of creeks and that kind of thing. Uh, fire protection is to be provided by the relevant volunteer fire department, which is a southeast community, I believe. Uh, this is the surety letter that was provided by the county engineer. Uh, this is the rural state cross-section for our subdivision regulations. We put it, we put it in the book, uh, a couple of years ago, in anticipation of, of these kinds of things. We've had a couple of folks that have pursued it, and so this is, this is one of them. Uh, this is Suzanne Wade, she had her sign it down. Uh, this is the road, they let the shuttle go down, so to gravel and stuff on the road, that's the basis that they grapple with. Uh, they went out, and we asked them if they did just study them prior to the final recording, they took, they took that, too. So we call the secretary at the end. And so that road is, is, is in, and, uh, they'll do the construction in, um, what happens, uh, prior to that surety being released, we'll go out and do a, uh, another inspection on the road, have fixing, if there are any spots to be settled, and that will, the top go down, and, and once that's done, we'll release most of the surety letter credit, and they will give ten percent. And, uh, and then it'll go to the housing committee for road taxes. And so this is a rural place type, this is one of those buildings that applies with, with the common plan and zoning and everything else, uh, every way, every way to look at it. Um, our findings are fact, and this is something that, I'll, I'll be satisfied of, for those finding the fact, this is not something that is going to have adverse impacts or, um, contradicts, contradicts any of our zoning or subdivision requirements before the common plan. Um, so about the final point, the flat approval, uh, any additional approval we have here, I'll bring it up, so maybe we vet, and if I can be recorded. And once the flat's recorded, they can obtain our list of sell lots. Uh, so the chairman has examined the motion, so we're agreeing to approve this final flat of the following conditions. A is to start laying it. If we find anything out there we want to do prior to, uh, or need to do, prior to the final recording of the flat, uh, for the bunch list. Um, the letter of credit, seventy-six thousand eight hundred dollars needs to be provided, it has already. Um, C is just something that's, if you, uh, requires them to maintain the delivery credit until we authorize it to be released, and we need the estimates. Uh, and so, like I said, I think those have all already been done, and the survey are ready to settle. But, but I'm trying to answer your questions, Mr. Besters, and a tenant, so I'll note, property was here. Uh, there, uh, the property owner in that, or the surveyor, if you're deciding to have a question.
Uh, I don't think it was required in general fire habits, something.
Well, it, so there's, it, it, there's a blow-off patent at the end of the line, which the, the, they were, were one, uh, these lots. If you look at the, the zoning code, the changes we made, these lots are all five acres or greater. And so what our zoning code says is, if you're doing lots less than five acres in a major subdivision, you need to install patents. And so lots over five acres, I think, are exempt from that requirement.
Yeah, I, I thought so, I was just curious, because I didn't see it on the plan. And because they're five acre lots as well, there's no need for seven lots, or any?
Right, that's right, that's right. We don't, we don't anticipate any, have a lot of issues or anything. And then, then we'll have to have land service for our nest bridge lot. If they're still basing it, it's needed to keep it, that's full, that can create, that can do that thing, but that's just part of our process.
Okay, are there any questions for Mr. Sudd or for the developer? Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Mr. Williams and seconded by Mr. Sudd. Any, uh, questions on the motion? Seeing, go ahead, Chad.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Holmes? Mr. Williams?
Hi.
Mr. Issa?
Yes.
Mr. Belcher?
Yes.
And Mr. Sudd?
Yes.
As you know, and, and I would just love to say, Mr. Smith, I, I know I sent you an, an email, uh, or a letter or something at the time, maybe I can be at a phone call, but thank you, it's a great project, and, uh, thank you for doing a great project. Okay, item number three.
Yes, sir. This is, uh, Angelina Estates, Phase One, Final Flat. Uh, this, this project used to be called the Baker's Acres. He's ready to go, he's steps, please. Uh, this, this project, Angelina Estates, used to be called Baker's Acres, when it initially came in. Um, I think what happened was that, as council, that a lot of everyone had to, they were doing the restriction of all the property. And realized that it was already, already, uh, Baker's Acres, usually they're not, they've been recorded before. And, uh, and so they, uh, they, they changed the tag in the United States. And so that's, that's what we're possible. Um, this particular phase, that was about forty, forty-five lots, I believe. Um, this, this base has fifteen residential building lots on twenty-two acres. Um, so they belong right on the lane outside Portland. Uh, this is a rural residential, so this is the thoroughbred boundary of the city of Portland, so it was, it remained, it was rural residential. Uh, water utilities were provided by Portland Utilities, uh, Project Server, Jamie, Jamie, Richard Gray, and so that engineer Jamie Lee. Uh, this is, that's suburban character area, which allows one unit per one acre, uh, for the county common plan. It's also in the old Portland plant region. I think it might have had an entry approval at one time in, in the Portland plant region. Um, that's all, it's all been abandoned, that's what we wanted to do. So it got preliminary plan approved by the, this plan commission on, in, uh, July of twenty twenty-two. And so it's a, it's a, what, what we would call a vested project at this time. Um, this is the context, you see, it's there, a little, little north of the city of Portland, the city limits, and there are thoroughfare. Uh, this is an aerial view of the overall subject property. And again, this is only a phase one, so they're taking it back, taking it back into here somewhere, um, for these first fifteen lots or so. Uh, this is the sketch plan that was approved by the planning commission. You see with, uh, the road stubs and that kind of thing, there is, it is a one-way out, a one-way in, one-way out configuration. Um, that was taken into account, was approved at the time by the planning commission, uh, with these, uh, the road connections, which are maybe finished out, uh, later on the process. But those are, that was just a sort of sketch plan, though. Um, and those road stubs, they've, they've, they've been a little bit, they've ended up down here, although they did. Um, and the other one, yeah, right here. So this, this is the preliminary plan that was approved in July of twenty twenty-two, and this is the final plan, this is the board of planning commission here today. Um, all these lots are forty thousand square feet or greater, which is a minimum lot size. You see this, uh, there's a low lying area right here, if you, if you have a chance to visit the site, uh, with an extra settlement basis, um, embedded there at this time, that will collect runoff of their, during the project. Uh, utilities, fire protection, the water utilities, uh, this property is provided by Portland Utilities. Uh, they run a six inch water line that's been installed within the subdivision, uh, hydrants have been installed, we did check for the location of those hydrants out of field. Um, they, they would have two, two of these hydrants, three installed at this time. Uh, both lots are in the flat, early in five hundred feet behind it. Um, one thing to note, and this is something I could have known, understand about the development process, is that development pays for most of the infrastructure upgrades that occurs underground. Um, in one way or another, a lot of times it's invisible, you don't know anything about it. Uh, but this is an example of one here, that they'll, they'll be running a couple thousand feet of water line within this subdivision, which they have to do, obviously, for backwater. Uh, but Portland Utilities, um, as part of this process, noted a, a bottleneck, and they're persistent that they need to be fixed in order to accommodate this. And so this development has actually had to go off-site in, on forty-six hundred millimeter feet of water line, eight inch line. And it's all hydrants, every thousand feet for the city of Portland as well. And so, uh, so this, this, this development has done a whole lot, uh, as far as, uh, correcting infrastructure problems and that kind of thing, is, is the same thing, especially with, with, with water. Uh, they, they spent, they had to spend a ton of money on that. That's not this body's problem necessarily, it's just something they had to do, but it is worth noting.
It's almost a lot.
Yeah. Uh, fire protection is to be provided by the, uh, volunteer fire department, because it is out in county. Uh, roads, there's a new future county roadway, uh, that has been installed as part of this development. Um, for this space, um, it's installed, but one is just finished completion at this time. Um, they have based on the buyers, fire go down, and again, top road is being installed, uh, later, once, once the houses are built, so that's, that's a wide lot out there, uh, on this building. Um, as those have been needed, uh, they will need to post a surety, we give them a letter for a hundred seventy-five thousand three hundred dollars, so they can post that letter of credit with this, uh, prior to the flat being recorded. Uh, drainage, um, that they've turned into construction, drainage plan, and those forty cows. Uh, they're not proposing permanent storming attention on this. Uh, they did provide, provide a, uh, what we call it, engineers, uh, finally posted, they get drainage impact. Um, due to the way the drainage calculations work on this one, there was essentially not a, not a significant increase in post development runoff. Uh, both engineers here, I can speak to that, but they, they provided that, um, that was, that was provided here in preliminary plan, uh, approval. Um, they do have water quality basins shown in different places through the project, that will take water off the road in different places at the entry filter, uh, which is a small water, uh, in this whole requirement that we have. Um, there's an H O A that will be required for this development in order to maintain any common elements, uh, that are there in the, in the project. Everything from kiosks to those water quality basins and then other, other items sidewalks. Um, Katelyn Smith Associates have provided H O A documents, uh, as well, uh, for that H O A's future in progress. Um, this is the surety letter that Mr. Boy provided to them, a hundred seventy-five thousand three hundred dollars. Um, I don't want a letter of credit, it's what we'll need. Uh, the common plan, again, this is, that's suburban place type, uh, one unit per one acre, um, businesses. And these are some photos, I went out and took some pictures last week. At least it's, uh, this is, this is not the rural state cross-section, this is very capable of twenty-two, twenty-four foot pavement with, with, uh, with curb, with the road curb. Uh, utilities, as you can see, are up, up around, that is allowed in the rural residential zone. Um, this, uh, this, this project, as I mentioned, is a vested project. This project, as I mentioned, is a vested project, it meets our requirements as well. They've applied delivery, everything we've asked them thus far in this project. Next steps, once this plat's approved, now they make the addition of approval on the next slide and then they can report the plat. It prevents the sell lots. So the chairman has examined motions on the screen, I think they're the same as they were for the last one. The bunch list, letter of credit, and they have out there on the screen. Maintain the letter of credit and they give us those for road drainage. And that concludes my presentation, I'll leave Mr. Gray, so you can see they contribute to the project and the developers as well.
Does anybody have any questions for the developer or engineer? Okay, seeing none, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, any motion for number one, approve?
Thank you, Mr. Smith, do we have a second? Commissioner Holmes, second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, go ahead, Chad.
Yes, Commissioner Holmes? Mr. Williams? Mr. Issa?
Yes.
Mr. Belcher?
Yes.
And Mr. Shaw.
As you know, Mr. Smith, congratulations. Thank you for coming, Mr. Smith, number four.
Sir, next item on the agenda is so-called Phase One. This one is nineteen residential building lots and seven lots, common open space. They belong to John Flane and stop thirty road. This is a property, a rural residential. It's in the Hendersonville Road Boundary. This property is represented by CSTG, the Belcher Shell Motors will be building on it here on site. Utilities are to be provided by the Hendersonville Utility District. They get their utilities, their White House Utility District, we have a letter on all the, Hendersonville Utilities that all the water sewer availability, water sewer utilities are available. This is the level of, under the very, very substantial infrastructure, our efforts is part of this project. They had to pour a civil line, I believe, under Vietnam Fairness Boulevard in order to, in order to. It's in the abandoned Hendersonville Land Region, it's now totally in the county's jurisdiction. But that's, this thing is kind of, you almost say double listed in a way, but it's not a thing, but just for background. It was approved by, this plan pretty much as it is, was approved by the E S C Hendersonville in December of twenty twenty-one, as a buy right development for them. And then the families went away. And so they came back and built some veterans and resubmitted, being all county requirements. We got approved again and up to their plat approved in June of twenty twenty-two. And so despite its bestie per state law and the county subdivision regulations. One thing to note about this development is a little bit different, is that this was approved under old provisions that don't exist anymore. That allowed them to reduce their lot size to a half an acre because they're on public sewer. Some public sewers are basically non-stational, this is actually a public sewer, on the coast of the triple plant. And so they're allowed to reduce to twenty-one thousand, seven hundred eighty square feet as part of those provisions. Now those provisions were repealed in June of twenty twenty-three. And so they went away, but it's a basic law, so these guys are vested in those old requirements. And so it's, that they're allowed to do what they're doing. You can see it's close proximity to the city of Hendersonville, but it's just outside the city limits, it backs up to the city limits. This is an aerial view of the subject property, you see there's a change in drain here that they had to plan around as part of this project. This is just something that was in the previous presentation from years ago. That I showed them, I thought I'd keep it in. This was a development that was proposed for this property back in twenty sixteen, that was denied by the city of Hendersonville. It was a bunch of, I think it was apartments, condos, and then townhouses, and some of that kind of stuff. And so this property has a long history and what it settled on basically is half an acre. That's what they've settled on, is something that they would have to get done with the county. And so this is the preliminary plat that was approved, and you see that drawl that they're running through there. They've kept the building sites all out of the floodplain. This is the final plat, so what is there, this is two-phase development. They're taking in this piece right here for Phase One. And this down here on the other side of the creek will be Phase Two. I think they've gone ahead and maybe put the box in, got it gathered in place here. But they're not, it's not part of this development, again, that would be the basic.
The box, of course.
Yes, it has crossed there. This is the final plat. See if there's anything else on the mission there. The onsite intention and a couple of locations, there's existing, all of them there, intention in several places. The internal streets have been completed in accordance with our subdivision regulations, the public roads. One of the things that it has, is there's a real line on John Flane, however, they've reprinted John Flane very much at Dogway, to Dogway, to Dogway again. And so what, one of the things with this development, we do use development to try, we can to fix problems. And so this is where the existing John Flane goes back through here. And that road will remain as a public road. But this strengthens that dogway basically and takes it down to here. And so this looks like it's offset from another road over here, I have questions about that, but this is basically just a private driveway right here. And so instead of having to make this curve, people will be coming through here, there'll be entryway limitation. And like we talked about in the study session, they can try to slow people down as they come through the neighborhood as well. Dogway, the internal roadway is eventually complete, some curb, some base, some cover, all that stuff's done. We have a letter of credit, a hundred fifty-eight thousand, one hundred dollar note on this one. That needs to be posted prior to the final plat. Or will they get that out? Again, utilities are Hendersonville Utilities, they've installed all the utilities and hydrants at this time. This is one, a lot of these developments will do this, maybe this is what the developers are going to do. But we require a hydrant at one thousand foot spacing, so every lot will be at five hundred feet of hydrant. This development has five hundred spacing, so they, like a lot of us do this, and these guys do this, well, they put everything on five hundred foot spacing. So no lot is less than two hundred fifty feet of hydrant. Olesight intention, so as far as drainage, the tension's been installed, has set the basis at this time. They'll be permanent stormwater infrastructure in the future. All the lots to back up drainage improvement, or that have floodplain in, that will be designated as a critical lot. So we have little star samples on those lots. That, we have individual ability plan on H1 to make sure that the finishable elevation is where it's supposed to be. And all the grading is done, it's supposed to be on the lot. They provided a draft and stormwater maintenance and inspection agreement. And so that'll be recorded with the final plat, whoever do that again, and that'll be recorded and noted on the final plat. And they did a flood study, they noted the hundred-year flood boundary. There was no, there was an act of utility, this is a map, and all the hundred-year floodplains there. And so they kept all the building sites out of the floodplain, we would require them to do that. This is the letter from Mr. Boyd, for the letter of credit. Drainage plan, so this is, if you go back to the flood study, this is, you see the flood study ended here. And that doesn't mean the floodplain ends, it were out, it just means it's a map, that's what a mapping is. And so that is part of this process, it's a hand grab, it's not what this stands for, but it's a study that they did to map the floodwaters there. So these lots that I mentioned, it was approved, but provisions that aren't in place anymore, but they allow them to reduce these lots to one and a half acre. Because they have access to public sewer. And so they made that requirement, I believe the smallest lot at this base is twenty-two thousand, one hundred square feet. So it's bigger than that minimum, and the largest is thirty-three, sixty-eight. And so overall, because that area that's in the floodplain, that's two sets of size, it's common open space. There's entryway limitation areas, little parcels, it's why they have seven parcels. Entryway limitation, stormwater areas, all that, it's all set aside as common open space at the time by the HOA. So it ends up being about twenty-seven percent of the site that's actually, I'm sorry, that's common open space. They provided some sample architecture, I think this is actually, that they didn't have to do this, this is a buy right development. They gave this to us a while ago. And I think conversations, as we've worked on this final plat, I think they've, to be honest, I think what the proposal to do now is probably better than ready for this. I think they've had to increase the price point due to the cost of this project. So I've been told that the starting point on this one is somewhere in the neighborhood of a million dollars, as we're looking at this development. So the suburban place time, as I said, is where this is located. This is some pictures here of the, of the development, the road that they put in. It's in pretty good shape. And so the findings of fact, this is something that applies with all of our regulations. It's grandfathered into some provisions that have been revealed since, but they've been given the right to do those things. They take all the steps that we've asked them to take to mitigate any impacts. Going straight down the road, those kinds of things will help to hopefully make things a little safer in that area. And there, like I said, there's a bit of traffic coming as well. And so general next steps, conditions of approval on the next slide will need to be met, they can report the plat. And once it's accorded, they sell lots, permits. And so those are our standard conditions of approval for final plaits. I'll review them all again, A three D there, example motion is approved. Be glad to try to answer your questions, Mr. Chairman.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Smith? Or the other ones who are presented? Seeing none, I would accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we approve the final plat of Creek and State's Phase One with those following conditions that we stood up on the screen.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Belcher. Any questions on the motion? And Chad?
Commissioner Holmes? Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Issa?
Yes.
Mr. Belcher?
Yes.
And Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
So we have four, is there one? Motion passes, thank you. We'll go on to item five.
Mr. Chairman, the last item on the record of the season is Roman Ridge Phase One Final Plat. So this is four residential building lots on five point zero four acres. Located along Anderson Road, which is a city in Andersonville Road, a rural residential. Development on the bridge, going to venture, entry, water sewer utilities provided by White House Utilities. Constabulary is associated on this one, and then project engineers are part of it. This is the context of the development, you can see this is a very developed area. The city of Andersonville and the tree farm is happening here. What they're proposing to do, I'll think about it, so here's a photo of the subject property. This is that preliminary plat, the anchor back in pain, that was approved. If you recall, they phased it substantially, so there was the lots along the front edge for Phase One. And then the rest of the development was phased two. This is that final plat that they turned in here for these four lots. They did have that right away along Anderson Road, the city of Andersonville Street. But they do coordinate any improvements or anything that can be done with the city of Andersonville. They've been in contact with the city of Portland's planning department. We did add signature block for the city of Andersonville to sign on this plat, so that they confirm that all their requirements are met for their road. For this phase, we require sure to be posted for two things, for the change in the road extension within Phase Two. And to ensure that if there's any damage to any of the existing roads in the retreat on the farm, they fix those with the developer's expense. And so we've provided a letter of credit combining those two things at a hundred sixty-six thousand, nine hundred dollars. So I did post that prior to final plat recording. This is the letter of credit from the county engineer. As I mentioned earlier, water sewer, both from White House Utilities, there's an eight-inch line along this front edge. All lots are located within five hundred feet of existing or proposed hydrant. And I think that's kind of a number from the preliminary plat of this development is, I think there's a, there's a highway right here on Spur Asland. That, right, right there, that serves all things, so that's the highway that takes care of these lots for us. One thing to note on drainage here, they've provided all the construction plans and all that to the county engineer. They would have given a notice of coverage. One of the things to be talking about is this city project up here at the point, it experienced some drainage issues like water pounding in the backyards. And so the county engineer remembered that from the state of the city of Andersonville. So as I mentioned, we tried to work with developers and they're all allowed to do it, usually to solve problems that exist. And so one of the things we've asked, we asked the construction plan, is to ditch that pounding along the way. And so even though that's in the city, we work closely with, we work closely with all the cities and have a good relationship with all of our staff members. One of the things we have the condition of approval, just to make sure that we don't forget it, is this lot number four here is going to be designated as a credible lot. And so the planning need to be revised to do that, that's not a big deal, they just add a star symbol on there. And then our staff have patched that there through a few process and tell them that they can turn in a site for this lot, showing the ditch. That didn't resist heat, but I always try to think through, what are the ways that we could forget to make them put in a ditch? And then somebody is living in the hocks, and then we have to try to make them about me that they should put in. And so if you want to get the ditch in before somebody builds that, basically.
Is that a concrete line ditch or is it just?
I don't know, I think it was being just a swale, basically, it's really a little bit, yeah. And so we have that as a condition of approval, I was talking to the district manager about that, they don't have a problem with that at all. They provided these adaptations, again, they did it for informational purposes, I don't think these lots are all about right. I don't know, I mentioned, these lots are, they're not going to end up with, those provisions I was talking about, the lots are, these lots are all over forty thousand square feet. And so they make our subdivision part of it. And our component of ours. Findings of fact, this development applies with all of our regulations, and so it satisfies all of them. Once the final plat's approved, they can satisfy those conditions of approval, then they can report it. And our standard condition of approval goes to Chairman, over the initiative of D here, of utility and drainage. There's no infrastructure to speak of on this one. And so we don't, we don't have, for this phase, but there is infrastructure for then Phase Two. And so just to circle back on that, that's why we're requiring person-to-person letter of credit. Because we don't want to have some of these lots, and then decide they're not going to build that road connection. Because we want that road connection between Ivy Point and the retreat on the farm. It was anticipated when the retreat project was approved, road stubbed the property line, and we did that for a reason. And so this is to make sure that it needs to build no matter what. And we can all let her create and have that, basically, if it walk away or something. They're not going to do that, but that's the reason we want it now, and they do want it. And I'll be glad to try to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Smith, Mr. Belcher?
Yeah, can you go back to the slide with the swale, Jersey swale? So looking at that, what's at the bottom? At the boundary of the bottom, I assume the flow would go from the top of this green to the bottom, do we know that? I assume this, the flow would go from the top of this green to the bottom, do we know that?
Marshall? The water, it has both directions, once it gets to the swell. So there's a portion that will go towards Anderson and there's a portion that will go back to the street. Uh, thank you.
Okay. My, then my follow-up question is, what is on the bottom where the boundary of this property is? Is that drainage into?
It is, it's, it, the water's going towards, I guess, I think the north end is going there. Let's say it's going north, so that the water is going.
Okay, the flow is all north then, okay. Okay, and it's gonna hit the ramp ditch that needs to be redone and to probably flow to the left?
Or in, in right. In, in right. I think it breaks like right there, is that right, basically? There, there's a high, there's a high side right there, it breaks into the left and right.
Okay, and studies or calculations have been done to tell us how much the expected flow would have been through with that?
I think that, that's the question Marshall said for him was, I think, some of this is in the detention basis of, and this does develop it up here or something, something. And so there were questions about whether it's actually accommodated. And I think it, it's pretty minimal with the development on this side, especially on making lots. Okay, I'm glad you're in space there.
And my, my second question is, on the roadway, because it's in the city of Andersonville's jurisdiction, we don't have any say as to what they're going to require. As far as upgrades, we just want to make sure that you check with the city and they've met any departments that they might have.
Right, and to the, to the south is the retreat on the farm project with this exact same situation. Come up in the city, the city required them to do some middle up payments on sidewalks, I think, and make some other improvements in the right way and that kind of thing. And so it is, it's a city road, um, they're, it's a collective road, they, they, they care about it, basically. It's not, and so they're, they're gonna, they're gonna, like, do it early. And we put that signature block on the final plan, just to make sure that it's looked at correct. So Sarah Lockers, the city engineer, later will have to sign the plan. Or I'd say that she's a little more direct.
Are the, uh, the swales, the, the center flow line, is that right on the property line?
The swell is contained in, inside Roman Ridge. That's really south. Well, well, probably a little bit south of where I'm showing it here.
Okay. And that, that would be a real problem for the shaker.
Right. And we'll do the same thing, as I said, once they apply that this happens, these lots, we have that guarantee statement. And when the, the rest of them come through, we'll show that as a guarantee statement there is soil, so that's soil. And we have standard on our plan that those soils have to be, which are, uh, can, that'll handle those types of things. Right, but, but we're getting that stuff too.
They do create lots of problems on there. Uh, any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for number one with A, B, C, and D.
We have a motion from the third second by Mr. Williams. Any questions on the, any other motion? Okay, Kathy?
Commissioner Holmes, yes. Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Issa?
Yes.
Mr. Belcher?
Yes.
And Mr. Strahl?
Yes.
And that concludes all of the major projects.
Uh, the next thing I'll get in, it was just to share the, uh, summary of administrative approvals. And we had a whole lot of trouble with this zoning change and so they, they had a separate one. We think that we did our best to keep up. Yeah, we did, while they put the hard stuff up there and everything, so we, we did our best to, and then the surveyors, because we're pretty good about not trying to see anything through for anything. So it was, uh, probably a lot back to all the projects that they were needing to get done in this way also.
So this was an anomaly?
Yes, yeah, and the, the list next one will be a whole lot shorter.
Thank you for not being the one.
Oh, I'm sorry, did you say you wanted?
No, no, no.
The directors update, um, I think of government, pretty much everything I want to talk about, Mr. Chairman, during the study session. But, uh, I think, you know, one thing that we want to sort of back off of is the, the comp plan update. Just to clarify that if you all, you all want me to move forward on the things that we're talking about there, there you go.
Do we need to vote on that?
If you want to, something, make something to break this to, you know, spend the time and resources, this is gonna be a heavy lift for sure.
Yes, I realize that, we, we, I'm sure I speak for everybody when we say we'll help in any way we can. Mr. Strahl, did you have a hand raise and say?
I did, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, Josh, what would be proceeded as far as the manpower, uh, that's going to be required for the comp plan? I, I, I heard, uh, at least I think I heard correctly that, uh, most folks talked about them earlier in the planning session. It was, was full-time staff. Uh, when I go back and look at the two thousand ten comprehensive land, uh, there are a garden variety of everything from civic leaders to selected people in geographical locations. That may have some available, but what's your vision on the manpower requirements for this?
Well, I mean, to be honest, I thought that had, you know, as we've talked about it over the last year or two or three or four. Uh, it is a, a very staff-led, planning permission-led, accounting-led kind of thing. I think sometimes the last thing we've had in place that you want to do is to have some, somebody who's been from, uh, you know, Minnesota or somewhere. And, you know, wherever, I was thinking something, but somewhere out of town and sweep-in doesn't really understand the community and project plan that nobody likes. You know, they don't want it in, in, uh, and so, you know, when we talked about this a few months ago, it's been a while, you know, now with the, I guess it's the budget committee. Um, when we're talking about the, the funds that are set, that's aside for this, um, you know, it's, it's not, if, if we do it, you know, the firm from Minnesota would probably do something a whole lot career and a whole lot more. Razz and the Taz and all that, the hours are probably not going to be as pretty. But I would hope that we, it, it'll be succinct, you know, it's not going to be a four hundred page document. Uh, Williams and Kevin did a really good job on there. So that's about, that's about, that's about fifty pages long, seventy-five pages long, something like that. And so it'd probably be something relatively, relatively brief, but there's a whole lot of data and analysis that goes into. And so like I mentioned there, study session, there's, there's help that we would need, um, on some kind of, on a call basis, I think, to have a firm, firms that we can call on to help us with different things to come up. You know, maybe it's grant design or it's data analysis or whatever it is. And there's, there's a couple of thousand dollars in that, in that, uh, pool of money that we have in the name of. So the funds that we have are more than that, but I think to do, uh, the staff, it's like everything else. Um, as I mentioned, I, I haven't had the range space to work on it most of the last few months with all this being going on. But I'm hopeful that maybe if the county engineer wants us to move forward and do it, we'll be able to do that here. The next few months really spent a lot of time with it, you know. Does that make it up what I asked you?
I, I just wanted to say I have total confidence that this department will do the most efficient, concise, minimal, but, but very, very accurate job on this. And I have no reservations at all with that. So, um, I think it would be appropriate to have a motion second and vote on it if, uh, if this be the desire of the body.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to accept the votes changed.
To accept, Mr. Belcher?
Wow, please go for it.
Okay, Kathy, one, one should go a couple of them.
Commissioner Holmes, yes. Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Issa?
Yes.
Mr. Belchers? And Mr. Strahl?
Yes.
And if I didn't have, if I could break a tie, I would say yes as well, so. Anyway, that passes unanimously. Other opinions?
Yes, so one, one other thing I want to talk to you guys about, very, a little bit unusual, I guess, um, but it, it was, it, it's kind of a unique situation. I, I initially was saying, and so, uh, it's something that came to us as something that will be a staff, it'll be you staff group kind of thing. But it impacts, it may impact, it concerns, that may be a better way, but it, it concerns, um, adjoining property owners and that kind of thing. And then like I mentioned, when we talked about the comp plan, I like utilizing you guys as, as a ring trust on a lot of things. I think there's a lot of knowledge here. Uh, this is something that, uh, and sometimes certain things come up that it's good to talk to you guys about. And so with all that being said, this is the, the Somerset Downs neighborhood, Phase Seven, uh, which is the last phase of the development. Um, a lot of, it, it backs up to the hollow neighborhood, which as you guys know, has had a lot of drainage issues over the years. Uh, so with Phase Seven, uh, that, I could spend all day talking about this project, but, uh, but we, we, uh, when they did Phase Seven, we worked with them very, very closely. Uh, to, to make sure that the drainage improvements that were put in for Phase Seven contained Phase Seven. And we didn't have a lot of the discharge, this, this discharge re-upset and runoff and those issues. They were plagued by that from previous phases and someone this one came through. We really, really worked, in fact, the developer, his credit really did a good job of putting in a whole lot of really, really robust infrastructure to accommodate whatever, whatever got thrown his way on this site. And there were some issues at first, and so we had to keep doing, basically make the ponds bigger and make the, make the drains swim deeper. Um, and, 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 and make it so that folks in the hollows aren't, aren't getting a bunch of blood washing down on them, basically. So they did all that. Um, and what that did in the back of these lots, as you can see, there's, it's a big drainage ditch back there on some of these lots. And so this is the detention basin over here, this is kind of open space. This is a swale that carries water, very deep, um, for a swell. And the reason it is that way is because during construction, we wanted it to capture everything in the canyon. So imagine it's just like, it's a ditch and this is higher on the property line, right? And so everything that comes back this way or this way, we wanted it to get caught in this and get taken to the pond where all the seven settles out. And so it worked, it worked pretty well, actually. Uh, there were some issues at first and, and, and we got it fixed and there were no more issues, um, right here anyway. And so it, it worked real well. And so what these, this is just a closer view, uh, these both, these lots has happened, you know, subdivision's turned into neighborhoods. And so, uh, this is the neighborhood now. And so these folks have bought these, bought these lots. And they, what they want to do, uh, because there's a very significant swale back there in the yard, that's there to accommodate construction runoff. Like where there's no grass, there's lots of blood, lots, there's lots of stuff coming down here and leaving the site. And so what they want to do is get more yard back, basically. And so what they're asking to do is to put pipes in, put a pipe in here and, and encapsulate, um, this, this swell. Um, during construction, there were been, you know, what kind of thing, like, uh, we need, we need this. Now, it, it, it's one of those things that, that is, is up for discussion for sure. Um, we, we always work, work closely with the folks in the hollows, we've got very, like, a couple of the neighbors are here today and I think live back behind here. Um, and, and, and so, uh, you know, they were concerned about this project, about what they were doing. Everybody's been very simple, helps, wish communication, people were talking to their neighbors and, and, you know, and we're here as an intermediary in some extent. And so this is something that they've, we've asked them to, you know, submit drainage plans and calculations and all that stuff. Because there's a lot of issues that, uh, I'm, I'm determined to, and Marshall's determined to not create anyways, right? And so, so they're, they're, they're proposing to encapsulate this, this swell, get more yard back, basically. Uh, we wanted everybody to have a chance to, like, talk, talk about it at the planning commission. If the, you know, folks in the hollows back here have questions, be able to answer those, ask these questions. And for the developer, or sorry, not the developer, but the homeowners and the, their engineer, be able to explain what they want to do. And so that's high level, what they want to do. Uh, this, 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 some pictures that, that they sent over to us. And so this kind of shows what we're talking about. So you see the fence here, right? So their yard goes back into, into a pretty deep swell, you see this hill right here. When this was cut, this is very, this is a particularly deep swell, you don't see this done very much. Uh, just to make sure that nothing goes down there into the hollows as much as possible. And so what they're looking at, this was during the big rain event that we had, in fact, a couple of months ago, we were raining, you know, a hundred, a couple of hundred years ago, hardly a couple of days. And so what they did, they, they sent this to us to kind of illustrate worst case, this is, this is what goes on here. Where it's not a situation where it's necessarily gonna, you know, it's not flooded back here. Um, and so you can see another, another shot of it here. And so again, my understanding is what they want to do is to put a pipe in it, put yard up, so they have more of their yard to enjoy. Uh, and you can see while that was going on, you can see what was going on down in the hollows right here. Um, that, there's a ditch right there that was, that's cool. So that gives you an idea of the amount of, amount of rain you can see there as well. So, anyway. That, that's a high level summary of it. Marshall was here, um, the, the homeowners that are looking at maintenance changes are here. Uh, it's time to throw this up in the vote, um, but, uh, some, some data from the, which will make our people with us offer us a minister or not, I'm certain.
I just have a question. If they move forward, maybe Marshall stands, I'm not sure if he's a correct person, but if they encapsulate that and cover it, what happens to all the rainwater that accumulates above them? Before it would all probably be channeled to that, to that swell, but where does that go now if we close that? Uh, if there be a small, much more shallow swell on top? So that they've filled in, and then on top of that, there should be a, a gravel, there would be six, eight, twelve inches on top of that. Whatever fell in the backyard may be collecting right now. So if you've got a path to where that destination is for that pipe to dump out, would it be there? Thank you very much.
What, uh, what is the material they're talking about, what size do we know it?
It, I think right now they propose that eighteen inch, basically, white plastic.
Okay. And they will be responsible for invertibility? So, so your drainage, I don't know why we don't do more of those along road sides. Cause it, it would help, you know, cutting people's property back and stuff, so. And I, I don't see a problem with that.
You've really addressed the issue pretty thoroughly, I appreciate it, and also what they're trying to do. From how I say, what, of course, we've been talking with this commission for a decade and a half. My concern that we have there on the other side of this is if the work that the developer did, that swell that you just saw, it took four tims and they did it, and it did well. For three years it's worked great. And now houses are built out and, and, and I understand that. We're just concerned that there's going to, I understand, a general plan, but there will be a wall, there will be some pipe, there are going to be some drains in there. After looking, living in the hollows and what we go through, we're just concerned about the maintenance and the, the, the pipe being big enough, the drains, you know, be kept open, you know, the leaves and grass clippings and, and twigs coming down and plugging it up. If that happens, where does the overflow go? Does it still stay in that, is there still a sufficient swell to keep that property in and keep that flow down there? Or is it overflow and then we get back into the problems we had? We, we, for this, for this thing, we just need to build. So all we're asking you to concern is the pipe large enough, is it sturdy enough, is it gonna last? You know, after these folks move out or we move out, somebody else is going to be worried with a problem when it fails. Are the drains gonna catch all the water of the rain, rain off that we're talking about? Not only the flow down, but the flow in from the hollowed areas affected? And will the fire smoking of the yards still be enough to catch it and run it down to that detention pond? If the drain for some reason gets blocked out? In other words, about the suspenders. Uh, in summary, the current design works, I'm not arguing, not, I'm just arguing that maybe it's, maybe a little bit overkill. It took a lot of killing to get it done, right, first, but, uh, we just want to ensure that it do changes if approved. Work and it not need to be redone until where these people have to redo it again at additional expense, like if the builder, the contractor did one of these, of the, the original site.
All valid questions. The, what I'm seeing up there, is that a catch basin, catch? Okay, how do we catch basins out there in the line? Two, just one?
There are just two, there's two properties.
Oh, two?
And there's a catch basin in the middle.
Okay, okay. And then it the outlet will go into the into the pond? All right. And is it anticipated that any roof range or yard range is going to go into it?
Uh, we see downstairs off the backs of the houses that we're entering.
And will will they make their way to the catch basin or will they actually positively connect to this eighteen-inch line?
Well, we, I think it would possibly happen. I think that's possible.
We would apply to that. We're at work, I mean, that's, we could talk about that. It is possible, it's possible.
Yeah. And and here again, this is where the S-bills are critical. So, you know, if if there is a problem down the line, you know where to go for it. So, and those are my only questions. Mr. Belcher?
Uh, to be transparent, I reside in Somerset Downs. This is just down the street from me. And I can appreciate my neighbors wanting to regain some of their backyard. And I I would not be opposed to this, but I will just make the suggestion, a couple of things. One, where the entrance of HDB pipe occurs, and Marshall probably already considered this, there is gonna be a backup because this area is gonna float with that area. So there will be somewhat of a backup.
Right. That's that's what they have showed us, showed us, proved to us that there's enough room there if the water goes back up, you know, there's enough space to accommodate the backup.
Yeah.
And up at the top, at the top part.
Yeah. I don't want, after the history of this, put my neighbors to the West. I don't want this to recreate problems that have already been solved. So my suggestion would be just on the side of conservatism, if you think an eighteen-inch HDB is enough, why not just go ahead and put in a twenty-four because it's not that long of a distance? It's not gonna be that much of a price increase. And, you know, just make sure that the design into the entry is such that we don't have, well, I don't know if you like it, but for those of us that have been to Boston, this was several years ago, there is a tunnel when you leave the airport, that sixty thousand lanes of traffic come down into it. And that's kind of the image in my mind with that potential. So my suggestion would just be to be very conservative in the design that goes in.
Yeah, I have one question for Marshall. I'm glad you didn't push it far away. When these are are being considered, um, right now, if a lot of that water is probably being absorbed into the ground as it goes through that area, is now kind of encapsulating in this pipe going to create more water at the end of the line? And is there an appropriate, uh, reservoir at the end of that to collect that water?
Yes. And the all the water, the drains, the area, it goes to a pond. And so the pond is is more than adequate to, you know, to handle any additional runoff. You know, maybe they're present in high out, you know, they all apply, but.
I'm just wondering, the reduction in the absorption of the ground, I'm wondering, are we increasing what's going in the pond?
I mean, there is, yeah, you're channelizing, yeah, if there are a couple yards where the pond is insufficient to.
I think we did have, we had them overexdueate that pond quite a bit. And so it it was it was designed to hold a lot more than than what it ever did, that pond ever did over top due to their their destruction and all that. Once they got it dug out and everything. So I think it's, I think it's probably fine.
Just make sure it'll create new problem.
That's good. Yeah, that's what's involved out in this area.
Any any other questions for anybody? Okay, why not?
Thank you, Matt. I just add, I'm sorry, if you wanted to, you want to add anything?
Yeah, I just want to clarify a couple things. Um, first of all, thank you for addressing this. I appreciate it. Listen, I used to live in a flood. I know the concern when it rains. And we got nervous every time about the previous level of floods. I can appreciate that. Um, as you can see from our picture, the swale is huge. I mean, and that only is for four backyards. It's not the whole subdivision. The rest of it, now that they've done the construction, it all flows into the street and goes in those rivers. So it's just four. So you have that giant flood. And that was, it's probably about that deep and about that wide going down there. Now, if you look at the second picture, you can see both of our yards, the way they don't rain, they just sort of, and then we end up with standing water the entire time too. So that ends up another issue. So usable water, um, we've got the drains on each side. Uh, our neighbor on the upside, he's agreed to let us go and grade even more specifically so that it will actually have a very resistant free flow right into the culvert that only go directly down to the retention pond. So I think it's it's a good plan. Like, the last thing we want to do is to have this overflow in the neighbors' problems they already have. We have a stamp engineer approve it all at great expense, that would be. And so it's, you know, I think it's a decent plan. I think we've got a lot of thought. We work very closely with the county and the engineers. We have the HOA approval of this. And so I think we we cross our Ts and dot our Is. But if you have any questions, I can answer. I mean, for me, there's there's multiple reasons why I also want, not just because of the water, uh, it's a safety issue. Uh, that that burnwear is placed is, let's see, that's the back of the property, the the point of it is probably here. So it goes extremely steep on this side. We lose that part of our yard. But to maintain it, I had to mow it with a hand. And in doing so, I broke my foot because it's so steep. On the other side, because it goes down so steep into our yard, it's not even useful hardly. I've mowing with a hand mower. I've had my feet go off and under me several times. Our grandchildren, we have eight of them. They don't want to play back there because they used to come down the hill. So they're whole ideas to make this use of property. So that we can enjoy Somerset Downs, not be a menace to the neighbor, have a normal flood flow, like flood flow or water flow that goes in there. And I I think I what we've done, we we would understand. So, I'm turned over mad. This other neighbor has even the same issue.
All right. So, uh, just to kind of, I did bring a letter out that if you guys needed, some of this was kind of more informal. So I won't do that. Uh, but I know the rest of the safety concerns. I do have an eighteen-month-old son that can't play in the backyard. My side of the property is the deepest part of the ditch right next to the detention pond. And that that ditch is over my head when I stand in the pond. And it's it's really steep. So my son just doesn't use the backyard. He plays in the drive-by, uh, which is not what you want when you buy a new house and you have this, you know, the biggest investment of your life and you can't enjoy it with your family. So, uh, that's why it's important to us. Uh, the other thing I wanted to address, which I think everybody's addressed, the drainage issues, um, I think this is truly a win-win for everybody because this, being able to do this is gonna allow us to put in patios, landscape our backyards, really beautify our backyard so that our neighbors behind us can actually, you know, look at something pretty other than a ditch and weeds like we currently have. Uh, another thing, I believe the subdivision behind us is it has some plans for a stormwater improvement on their side. Um, a lot of that, uh, water that comes out of that detention pond doesn't only come from our four lots. So there's a lot of other water, surface water coming off the road that drains into that pond that also goes down to their, uh, their development. So I think it'd be just kind of keep things in in perspective that it's not just our four lots draining all that water to that to that property. Uh, so just a few things to think of. We do appreciate our neighbors and appreciate the ability to be able to talk about this with you guys. And, um, you know, I think just the fact that we've got an engineer involved and and we're taking all the right steps shows that we're we're trying to be good neighbors. So I appreciate the time.
I think one of the the neighbors' concerns as well, not a big question, that, you know, the construction retain wall, and as I'm not talking to anyone about it, I think the structure of the retain wall, they're right, our concerns about, um, just what the land starts going on with that and, you know, and and those kinds of issues. And so, you know, we we'll definitely, uh, county engineers, stormwater agents will be ensuring pretty robust stormwater controls. And so it's harsh, so it's, you know, those kinds of things, make sure that, um, nothing, just certain to wash it down, you know, on you guys.
All right. Were there plating by something for retaining?
Yes.
So rather than a slope?
Yeah, so it's it's right there on this this lot right here.
Oh, okay. Apparently that's what I would have done. So, um, for for those of you on the planning commission that haven't seen this, I I did get the tour by Josh. And what what they've done is pretty remarkable. And then what we are funding is the county commission to repair, you know, what we have nothing to do with thirty or forty years ago that that many of your houses are.
Three days in all of us.
Yeah. I mean, they they've got CMP pipe that is rusted, all kinds of stuff. So we're we're doing a good thing over there. And I I, once again, I I have total confidence in in Marshall and the whole team to to make sure this will last and and be a great amendment to the to the area. So. Go ahead, Mr. Belcher.
One other thought came to my mind. With the potential of HDB pipe clogging up, uh, is, and I don't know how this could be done, but to restrict trees from being planted, that the leaves and limbs and everything would fall on the pathway, you know? I'd like to comment only because I had, I had replaced another front yard, one eight, I think it was a fifteen-inch metal drain with a dual-wall, two dual-wall twenty-four-inch drains. And just going to dual-wall smooth interior helps that stuff flow through, just to run in and clean it out. So that the lockout, but once it gets in, it's smooth that way. So that would be a concern, but if trees are planted and you end up getting a lot of, you know, leaves, limbs, et cetera, and so on. And I'm familiar with HDB, right? You're speaking about interiors, very smooth. It's can slide down. It made very large one of the, uh, file auto beat farms, I think, up in Northern Southern County. So it it's friction is very low.
Yeah, I'm always concerned about roots, you know, crunching and breaking through. I've replaced lots of lines over the years because of roots. So, anyway, uh, yeah, I think I think this is a win-win for everybody. And, uh, I I trust our department to go ahead and make sure to get more time out. If you have no other questions for, by any.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I appreciate that.